Do you want to ask Steve?
I'd like to call the November 10th meeting of the Board of Selectment to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first part of our meeting is a continued public hearing on Southhold Road land regarding the notice of intent to sell for other use per mass general law, Chapter 61A, Section 14, land along Southhold Road and Southhold Meadow Road. And the first part of the discussion will be potential funding sources if the land is purchased. And I will turn it over to our CFO, Ed Kasnovich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have this on a PowerPoint presentation, so I'll need to make my way over to the podium.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is now open.
Sorry.
Reopen.
I'm having a little difficulty here. I can't start this from the beginning.
Do you need a brief reassess, Mr. Kasnovich?
Let me just go back and let me see if I can trigger it now. I'm just not seeing it on here, but it's up here. Okay, I know there was a lot of information we presented at the last public hearing. And for the viewing audience, as well as those that are in attendance, we thought it would be best to visually see the funding options. These funding options were posted online, and we have supporting documentation by way of schedules that support the figures that are listed on each option. So, option number one would provide for a short-term borrowing for $2.865 million for a period of four years, and that ban would be converted over to a permanent bond issue in the amount of $1,865,000. That's a million-dollar difference. That would allow for a contribution by the donor to be made over a four-year period of $250,000. An interest rate of 1.50% was calculated on the amount that we originally go out and borrow. That would be $2.865 million. Year-one interest upon the one-year anniversary date or renewal of that ban in year one would be $42,975. That's 1.50% of $2.8 million. And as you can see, each year thereafter, we pay down a quarter of a million and only renew the balance of that ban. Over a four-year period, we would pay interest totaling $177,375 using a rate of 1.50%. I can tell you, we just went out for $11.2 million a month ago. On September of 2014, we paid a rate of 1.25%. So, I'm using a little bit higher rate. We could probably get a rate of about the same, all depending on the market conditions and all depending when we go out to market. The rates have been creeping up, not significantly, but modest increase. Using a 1.50% rate would be a fair assessment at this point in time. The tax rate increase on that ban would be about two cents per $1,000 of value. So, the median house valued at tonight's tax classification hearing is going to be pegged at $227,980. The tax impact on that short-term borrowing would be approximately $4.56 per median house of value. Pros and cons. If we were to go out and ban that money today, certainly we're getting a great rate, 1.25%. Downside is we would be bonding the balance about four years from now. We don't know what the market rates are going to be four years from now. We can tell you the rates are great right now. We would not be bonding this in year one. Like I said, we would be bonding it after year four. We've realized historic low rates this fiscal year. In the increase, if the rate should go up in four years, we'd be paying more in interest costs than we would if we went out and bonded it today. Option two would take that same $2,865,000 and apply the gift to that. So, this is what we would be borrowing in year four. We, under Chapter 44, Section 7, Section 7.3, were allowed to secure bonds at a term no less than 10, no term greater than 30 years. This presentation shows a 10-year term and a 26-year term. The four years of bans are applied against the 30-year term, so we would only qualify for a 26-year remaining balance on our long-term debt. 10-year term, and I'll get into some of the specific schedules, we would currently get a rate of about 2%. The level debt service on a 10-year note, on a 10-year ban, bond, I'm sorry, would be about $205,600. That's about 10 cents for every $1,000 of value. For purposes of presentation, we're always using the median house, although you could pay more, you could pay less, all depending on the value of your home. For the median house, it would mean a tax rate increase of $22.80 each fiscal year. Total debt service over a 10-year period, $211,400. 26-year term, rates higher because we're going out for a longer term, 3.10. That's what we would get today. Level debt service of about $107,040 per year, that's debt and interest. Tax rate impact, six cents per thousand. Total value on a median house, $13.68. Total interest paid, very important, $878,000. As you can see, the longer we go out, the more interest residents and the businesses would be required to pay. Under the 10-year term, we get a lower interest rate versus a 26-year term. It does mean a higher cost per $1,000 of value for the homeowner. Lower debt service by way of interest paid, as you can see, $211 versus $878, $600,000 difference. We retire the debt as soon as possible, and that's good for our debt profile because when they look at our total outstanding debt, they want to know what portion of that is being paid off in the short-term over the long-term. On the flip side, on the 26-year term, negative is we would be paying a higher rate to borrow the money. It is a lower cost to the residential and businesses. Higher debt service by way of interest, as you can see, $878,000. This would allow us to borrow at 26 years, the maximum term allowed, using the ban option. And this would increase our debt burden as a percentage of general fund revenues. So, our debt profile, we're very cognizant of. We have identified that as an area that we would like to work on. The longer you go out for your debt service, the more it's going to hurt your debt profile. Okay, I'm going in the wrong direction. Here we go. Here is the debt schedule for that previous option. At 10 years... Why isn't that not coming up? Now I'm having difficulties. I can't get it to move off the screen. Madam Chair, if you can give me a few minutes, I just have someone from IT come up and take a look at this.
Okay.
Make a motion. We take a five-minute recess, Madam Chair.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess. Hold on one second.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
We're back in order. Cable?
Here is that schedule for a 10-year bond issue at $1.865 million. As you can see, in year five, we are bonding the 1.8. Total interest, if I can bring it to the bottom of the page, $211,400. 10-year term, estimated rate 2%. 26-year bond issue at that same value at a 3.10 estimated rate would give us, total interest highlighted in the bottom, $878,007.5. This is the purchase price, not utilizing or not accepting the new gift. As you can see, we would have to go out and borrow immediately $2.865 million. At a 10-year term, we would still get the same rate of 2%. At a 30-year term, we would get a rate of 3.20%. Level debt service at the 10-years would be $314,700. Level debt service over the 30-year period is $148,800. The difference between this and the ban option is we would be allowed to go out to the max at 30 years versus a 26-year option with a four-year ban period. Tax rate impact, 10-year, 16 cents per thousand; 30-year, eight cents per thousand. Median house at a 10-year, $36.48; 30-year, $18.24. Total interest paid at the 10-year, $324,900. Total interest paid over the 30-year period, $1,633,120. $1.3 million more by going out for a 30-year period. Pros and cons, 10-year term, lower interest rate versus the 30-year term. Pay a higher cost per $1,000 of value. Lower debt service interest paid, $324. We retire the debt as soon as possible. And like the other scenario, it's better for our debt profile if we retire the debt in a 10-year period versus something other than that. 30-year rate, we pay a higher interest rate upfront by about 1 and 1/4%. It is a lower cost to the taxpayers of the community. Higher debt service means more interest paid, like I said, about $1.3 million more. This would be the maximum term allowed under 44, Section 7.3. And once again, this would also increase our debt burden as a percentage of general fund expenditures. Here's the schedule for the 10-year bond issue at $2.865 million. Once again, at the bottom in yellow, $324,900. 30-year at $2,865, $1,633,120. There is one more funding option, which we'd like to put out there tonight that we didn't put out at the last meeting after having several discussions with our financial advisers. Quite honestly, this would be the option that we would recommend as a borrowing option. This would, this allows us to do two things at the same time. Number one, we would go out only for a million-dollar ban, only the amount required to cover the value of the gift. There would be a four-year pay-down on that option, as you can see in this first box. The interest, the total interest we would pay on that million over a four-year period at a rate of 1 and 1/2% would be $37,500 versus the old ban at $177,000. So, there's about $130,000 savings there. We would go out and bond $1.865 million, the net of the gross and the gift, at an attractive rate that we could get today, estimated at 2%, and we would pay $211,400. That model really isn't changed from the original model we put out there, but the ban option tied to it is different. Both tied together would result in savings over the first option we put out there. And then the final option, which is a non-borrowing option, would utilize a portion of free cash, stabilization, and/or excess levy. I can tell you, over the last five years, we worked very hard to work on a rating upgrade from our rating agencies, both Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's. I can tell you, in September of '14, roughly 60 days ago, we were just granted a, we had our AA3 reaffirmed by Moody's, but we got a positive outlook on that rating. Positive outlook is an indication for Moody's that they are willing to consider giving us an upgrade on our next bond issue, provided that our trends continue to build our reserves with increases in free cash, increases in our other reserves, with a favorable year-end closing like we saw in FY '14. I think any utilization of those reserves, I'm not going to say we would be downgraded because I'm, if I were to guess, I would say no, but it would put into jeopardy our ability to get an upgrade on the next go-around. So, they may pull our positive outlook away from us if we utilize any portion of our Excess levy, I know there's been a discussion about excess levy. We do have 3.350 available. That will be presented tonight at the tax classification hearing, given the level of appropriations that's already been voted by town meeting. You could use a portion of excess levy to fund a portion of this article. We don't believe it would come with consequences, but what I can tell you is that it would result in a tax rate increase. Excess levy is not like free cash. It's not available. It's not liquid. It's not, it's not sitting in a bank account. It's the town's ability to appropriate more money at any given time. Excess levy does have to be appropriated before the town sets a tax rate. The tax classification is one step closer for the town to get its tax rate approved for FY '15. The Department of Revenue is the state agency that approves our tax rate, not the Board of Selectment. The Board of Selectment at the tax classification hearing takes four votes, none of which set the tax rate. They set the factor for the tax classification and approve other votes for small business exemptions and things of that nature. So, Madam Chair, members of the audience, and board members, these are the funding options that we presented, slightly modified based upon the last option on the borrowing that we would recommend as a priority in the borrowing portion of the funding options. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point in time.
Okay. Do you want to make the statement regarding the gift before we move on?
Certainly. Through the chair, to the board members and the audience, several questions had arisen in the last few days regarding the anonymous donation of $1 million and what specifically were the restrictions. As we were told by the donor last week, the restriction is, and I just want to clarify this, that if the town were to accept the $1 million donation toward the purchase of the land, the donor has put a restriction or a condition on it that 100% of the land that is purchased by the town, under this notice of intent, would remain as open space to be preserved for conservation and preservation of its natural habitat. Walking trails would be fine, anything passively walking through it would be fine, but not active recreation. The donor also specified that 100% of the land were, if the town were to use this donation, needs to remain under the control of the town. In other words, the town would not be able to RFP any portion of the property once it acquires it for use by another party, whether that be a lease or a sale. So, I hope that qualifies it. Thank you.
So, do board members have any questions, either for Mr. Kasnovich or Mrs. Jacobson?
Not currently.
So, just, I have one question for each of you. We talked about the passive use, and I know someone mentioned a dog park. Is that considered passive use, or would that be restricted?
Through the chair, according to the donor, they would like to see the land preserved in its natural habitat. So, if that required moving anything, changing anything, that that would likely not be allowed. If it were to just be part of walking trails, and I think there's still the issue of just making sure that people clean up after their pets as they walk them, but it's my understanding that that is not the intent of the donor, to make it into any kind of specified dog park.
And I have a question for Mrs. Kasnovich. You mentioned the positive outlook by Moody's and caution us to the use of free cash and stabilization. What impact could it have on the middle school borrowing if the town didn't receive the anticipated upgrade from Moody's in regards to impact on the residential tax rate?
Very good question. We just went out for about $11.2 in short-term bans to meet our middle school obligation as well as our FY '15 capital. That $11.2 will come due in September of '15 and will be converted over to long-term bonds. The term on the Auburn Middle School bonds will be for a period of 20 years, and the term for the town CIP capital will be for a period of 10 years. We're hoping through the positive outlook that we would get upgraded from a AA3 to a AA2. As a result of that potential upgrade, the town would realize lower interest rates on the money that it would borrow once the upgrade is in place. That would include the $11.2 million that we would convert over on September. And it would impact any and all future borrowings going forward as well. That translates into savings for each and every one of the taxpayers in this community. Lower interest rates mean our debt and interest payments would be lower, whether it is funded through a debt exclusion or whether it's funded through general fund revenues. Doesn't matter. It's all coming from taxation. So, it's important that we move forward, we stay the course, and we try to get this upgrade in place. That's only going to benefit all those who reside in Auburn.
Thank you. Ms. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Eddie, if we used 100% of excess tax levy, now that's not money sitting in a bank, like you explained, it's nothing we have sitting around, it's our ability to raise that. If we use 100% of the excess levy to purchase that land, how is it going to affect our bond rating? Because I know we're going to have more projects down the road that are going to be significant. And I was kind of curious as to what would happen to our bond rating if we used 100% of the excess levy.
To be honest with you, I believe it wouldn't impact our bond rating. It would impact the taxpayers of the community. Because you're raising it all in year one, you're raising $2.865 million as a one-time appropriation that is going to hit the pocketbooks and wallets of every taxpayer in this community, including the businesses. It's pretty significant. And I think Cindy can present some, has something presented that shows if we went to the levy limit, our tax rate would either go from estimated 17.26 per thousand, it's either 18.88 or 19.09. She was checking on that. But anyway, that's about $1.50 more per $1,000 of value. So, if you do the math based upon your value of your home, it's pretty significant. Not only that, but that full impact would have to be realized over the third and fourth quarter because the first and second quarter tax bills went out based upon last year's actual tax bill. So, you'd see some people's taxes for the last two quarters, third and fourth, jumped dramatically in order to fund that one-time appropriation.
Thank you.
Do board members have anything else? Mr. Simoneon?
So, during your presentation, you said that the bond rating probably wouldn't go down if we were to use free cash.
I didn't say that.
You said...
I said excess levy. I said if we go into the reserves, which is stabilization of free cash, what I said is, I'm not so sure we would have a bond rating downgrade. What I said is, we wouldn't, we put at risk at our positive outlook, which is a...
Right. Okay. Fair enough. So, that would most likely be a temporary thing, really, because you've stated several times in the past that one of the things they look at, and what is it, twice a year we get reviewed typically?
All depends. Normally, once a year.
Okay, once a year. But one of the things that they, that they've been impressed with is the fact that we've committed to our financial policies. So, using that reserve for this one-time purchase doesn't mean that we're just, you know, and I'll just use the term since I'm an old Navy guy, we're not, we're not saying we're going to go out on the town like drunken sailors and blow the whole thing. We're saying, you know, this is an investment into property to be a one-time purchase, and we're still committed to those policies where we would still continue to allocate money every year that goes back into that. So, it's possible that, while I understand the positive outlook would be a short-term thing, maybe the bond rating doesn't go up this year, but it possibly could next year because we're still committed, we would still have a good amount in there, and at the same time, we would still be committed to the policies that we put in place to continue to fund those accounts. So, it really possibly could just be a short-term impact.
I can tell you this, when we were downgraded as a result of some of the reserves that the town meeting voted in 2005, it took us eight years to get back to where we were.
But everything was wiped out completely in 2005. We're not talking about doing that.
Everything was not wiped out completely.
Well, it was, it was a substantial amount compared to what was there.
So, I would say a $2.8 million hit against free cash is pretty significant. That would wipe out...
You're not answering my question.
That would wipe out 50% of our free cash.
I, I'm not trying to spar with you, Eddie. You're not answering my question. You've stated over and over and over again that one of the things that's impressed them the most is the fact that we've committed to the financial policies. We would still be committed to those policies. We'd still continue, as of next year, to continue to put money into free cash. So, I don't understand why all of a sudden now it's, the door seems to be swinging the other way, and you're saying it would be extremely dramatic.
If I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
It actually is a violation of the adopted financial policies. It actually is a violation of the adopted financial policies. Adopted financial policy sets a benchmark for all of the reserves. And so by moving off the benchmark, you put it, town management's credibility is at stake here. We put together those financial policies and attempt to build up our cash reserves to a level that's acceptable for us to get a bond rating. Utilization of free cash is going to put us below the benchmark.
So even for an investment like this, we're not even, that has no bearing?
It's a credibility issue. If something, if some other Chapter 61A land should come before the board in the next six months, is it okay to do it again?
I don't know. I don't like to play the what-if game. I mean, I've always said, things should be addressed on a case-by-case basis. I guess it depends on where town meeting looks at it, but I don't know, it seems like we're trying to steer...
I'm not so sure the rating agencies are going to see this as a one-time situation.
I mean, the other side of the coin is, which you've said to me several times, is the other side of, the other edge of this sword is continuing to put money in there could make the state look at us in a different light and possibly cut other funding that we receive because we're considered to be in a better financial position than a lot of other towns. So I'm just, you know, it just seems like we're trying to steer town meeting towards single option here.
Are you finished, Mr. Simoni?
Yep.
Mr. Carpenter?
Ed, what's the actual value of the land? We're paying three, but it's not valued for what we're going to, what is going to be on the books is not a $3 million investment. It's...
There's a residential value and there's an open space value. I think the open space value as pegged by the chief assessor is $317,000.
So I think that's where you're saying that this would impact. It is an investment in open space, but as we know, that because of the development price is quite overstated and is not really truly fair market value by any reasonable standard. When the rating agencies come before us, they're going to say, you spent $3 million for a $300,000 piece of land.
I don't know if they'll drill down to that level because we haven't had an appraisal done.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Are you all set, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you.
Did you have something else, Mr. Holstrom?
One other thing, through the chair, we're looking at one piece of land right now for $317,000 for open land. However, this isn't the only 61A property we have in town. And we have to look at those on a case-by-case basis. And I think that if, depend upon what the outcome is of this, is where those other 61A properties may be looking at their land and saying, well, what can you do for us? And I think it's going to put us in a very, very difficult financial situation. So I guess we want to be careful on what we do here with this. The $3 million is a lot of money for open land. As you say, the million-dollar gift is a great thing. However, for a million eight for open land, we're going to have to be looking at those 61A lands, properties around town also, because they may come back to us too. And where does this stop and where does it end all the way around? Just a comment.
Okay. Mr. Simoni?
Again, we can sit here and say, what if this happens, what if that happens? I mean, that's a game that nobody wins. We don't know who else may be planning on selling property. We don't know what's going to happen. Several people who've spoke here over the last two weeks have identified a potential impact of that land being sold and developed, which could certainly be more than what we're looking at here to utilize money to purchase the land. So, you know, we can't just focus on one part of this. We have to look at the whole thing. And we can't sit here and say, what's going to happen five years down the road, what's going to happen 10? Sure, it's great to plan and say, there's a potential this could happen, but we can't base the decision to do this or not do this on what may happen with other land. I mean, you know, the land for Pappas Park, Mr. Blaze came in here a few weeks ago and talked about, you know, the foresight that they had to purchase that land. You know, they weren't looking, you know, 30 years down the road and saying, you know, what else, who else might decide to sell land depending on what we do here? And maybe we shouldn't buy it because of this or that. If they had done that, as I said last week, we'd still be looking for a place to put that complex. So, you know, you can't just argue one side, you've got to look at the whole thing together.
Are you finished, Ms. Simoni?
Yep.
Okay. So I have a question for Mr. Kasnovich, following up on Mr. Simoni's comments regarding the free cash stabilization or excess levy. I know it's a one-time, it's a short-term downgrade, yet earlier you said that we are expected in September of '15 to convert those to long-term bonds, the middle school funding. If we used any portion of free cash stabilization or excess levy, in your opinion, would we recover enough to get a favorable interest rate by September of 2015?
My opinion would be we would get a rate based upon our current rating at a AA3. Our chances of a AA2 would go away.
Okay, thank you. Do board members have...
That doesn't mean a downgrade, it means we...
No, I understood. So what are we, what are we talking about in the difference between the AA3 and the AA2?
Maybe 25 basis points? I don't know, all depends on the market.
So again, it's another unknown, we don't know.
I mean, I want to make this analogous to anyone who is, has a home mortgage, same type of principle. The better the credit rating, the lower the interest rate. The lower the term, the better the interest rate. Same principles apply here, except we're talking about much more money. As a homeowner, you would like to see the lowest rate you would possibly get because it's going to mean, over the term of that mortgage, that you're going to pay less interest cost. Your monthly payment is going to be down. The same principle and logic applies here. We're trying to get the town the best rate we can for the shortest term so we can see the savings that get passed along to residents and the business owners of this community. By utilizing, or if there's any erosion of our reserves, based upon discussions we had with our financial advisors, they believe that our positive outlook would be removed, we'd have to start all over again. That could take a number of years for that outlook to be reconsidered and given to the town again. So any money that we're going out to borrow, even though we're not downgraded, it's still costing the taxpayers money because we would be able to get those bond proceeds at a lower rate if we were to get that upgrade.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to public comment now, but this is our third evening of this continued hearing. If I could just ask you if you have something new to add? I appreciate everyone's comments regarding the impact on the neighborhood. If anyone has anything new they want to add, I can, you know, recognize speakers now.
Madam Chair, can I just make a point before we do that?
Excuse me one moment.
I just want to say to Mr. Simoni's point, those of us who have been lifelong residents, and in 1989, I was a freshman in high school along with two of my classmates who are sitting here. And if Mr. Blaze's vision had gone forward in 1989, we wouldn't have the Pappas Recreation Complex. We'd have a new high school, and we'd have a middle school complex. If 10 years later, when Mr. Raff was the executive secretary here and the school was still trying to do it, we would have had, again, a high school with athletic fields. So we're looking at this as if, oh gosh, in 1985 and '86, we purchased this land and weren't we wise that we just left it? The reality is, the decision-makers in the town, at least on two occasions in my lifetime, wanted to put a school up there. And the major reason why the school didn't go up there is because there were deed restrictions placed on it that Mr. Post's family put on it. And the residents of Goddard Drive said, I don't think so. And I think it's also important to recognize that when the Pappas rec site went up there, a lot of people in this room were not happy because of the increased traffic. And as you go on Curtis Street and you look behind the houses, you see how close the Pappas Recreation Site is to these people's homes. It has had a major impact, not as big of an impact with traffic as a high school, but I think that, you know, it's wonderful to look back, but it's also wonderful to remember our history. And four years after we purchased this property, many leading people in the community wanted a high school. So we would not have Pappas Recreation if they had carried the day, but they didn't. So I think we need to look at, you know, the totality of history. I think there's been a lot of decisions made over the years that have benefited the town. We've made some good investments. But I also think we need to look at this piece of property, and we do have an item B onto this, which I know we'll take up later, but we need to evaluate this land and make sure that what the gentleman is presenting as fact, or at least is possible. And we don't have all those answers yet. So until I get to walk the site with people that have the expertise that I lack, I can't make a position. Currently, Mr. Post will not allow me to do that. So it's difficult to evaluate it. There are state laws that do have impact on this land that a 40B project will not waive. The planning board process will be waived, our dimensional requirements will be waived. But we do need to evaluate this property. We do need to make sure that what we're buying is, in fact, preserving your way of life. So that was my only point, and I thank the chair for her indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Is that Mrs. Proudy? If you could come up, please. Just give your name and address for the record.
Used to sit up there where you are, used to be town clerk, am now a town meeting member. But I want to remind those that were high school students when we bought the land in 1985. Had we not bought it, we would have had approximately 192 houses, which would have given us maybe 400 more kids to educate. So while the high school didn't go in where some might have wanted it, it would have had to be a lot bigger if it hadn't been for Joan Cassidy, Lorraine Mordred, Craig Blaze, Jim Hurtin, with the help of the town administration. And I also want to tell you that as town clerk, I remember when that went on the ballot, and it won in every single precinct. It won in one, it won in two, one in three, one in four, and one in five. The people in Auburn wanted that land. And I think that those leaders, and they were leaders, Lorraine and Joan, they were leaders. They wanted it, they went after it, and they got it. And we know now, at least I know now, they made the right decision, and I hope you will too.
Thank you. Is there someone else who wants to speak? Mrs. Kems?
Bear with me one second.
And again, if you could just give your name and address for the record.
My name is Jane Kems, and that is spelled K-J-E-M-S, and I live on 154 Pagetown Street. And I wanted to say that nothing is so difficult to predict anything about as the future. And that is relative to your remarks about where the rates are going. So this is what it is. I wanted also to say that the cost, what is the, I ask you, what is the cost as the alternative to the town if we do not buy that land and we have 200 apartments going in to children of, people of childbearing ages? The impact it will have on the schools? The impact it will have on the whole traffic patterns? What it will cost, what will it cost the individual taxpayer to pay for increased police, fire department, and most of all, teachers? We have an absolutely unique situation in Auburn. We send almost no children outside of town, special ed's children. They are incorporated in the most remarkable way in the schools, in the schools. Whereas you might get this sudden surge of 2.5 children per 200, how many is that? Like 500 children or so in all, at all levels? And some of them, we might not be able to incorporate in the schools, in the classrooms. And we might find out an enormous burden of children who needs education and who needs to be sent to other places, which is never good for the children anyway to be bussed out of the school. So take into consideration, it's people you're talking about, small people and big people.
Okay, thank you.
And so that's, I think that before we do anything, we need to go through and do a thorough analysis, not just a traffic analysis, a human analysis, before we go through turning down this wonderful opportunity, even if it'll cost, it will not cost nearly as much as if we allow a big, well, I don't know what to call it, but it's a model that has failed in many, many other places, urban and suburban, so.
Thank you. Just thinking. Town meeting member here?
Hi, my name's Greg Bohling, that's B-O-H-L-I-N-G. I live on Little Drive, and I'm a town meeting member. So when I first heard about the property, I went ahead and I drove through it. I came up from Millbury, from the shops there, came up Greenwood Street, figured I'd check it out, see what was going on. Had some ideas, maybe what the town could use it for. I don't know if anyone has kids that are playing outdoor sports, but our grass fields are not grass anymore, they're overused. They've turned into weed fields, and now they're dirt fields. But when I went through there, I didn't see a lot that we could use it for. Certainly, it's near the golf course, but it's not. It's a slope, it's hard to get into. My initial reaction was houses. And then I've heard comments, you know, from residents and other things, that have had some pretty interesting ideas for it. So, but the one thing I did do is I went and talked to my neighbors, and I went to talk to other residents. And I asked them, because I'm going to have a vote on this, what should I do? Not one single individual told me not to buy the land. Now, they all had different reasons, you know, and we can all imagine them, we've heard them all, right? Some want them as open space, some want us to not be Worcester, right? I mean, those are, that's the reality of the situation. But not a single person told me, don't buy the land. So I think that's something important, you know, to consider. And, you know, they've had a lot of different ideas for things that we could use the land for. And one of the questions I had today did get answered in terms of what the restrictions are around that million-dollar donation. It's a lot of money, but it's a lot of restrictions. So the other question I did have is, you know, once a decision is made, how is this going to be presented to town meeting? Are we going to determine accepting the gift or not today, tomorrow, before meeting? Present either 1.865 or 2.865 in a borrowing method? Or are we going to present the full amount and then come back?
Do you want to take that?
And decide whether or not to accept the gift and then sort of redo at a follow-up meeting?
Through the chair, and I would turn to the CFO to add to this. In the last couple of... In the last couple of weeks, we've presented both scenarios for the 2.865 without a gift, as well as the dollars with a gift. It would be up to the Board of Selectmen, and we would look to them for guidance as to how they would like us to present at town meeting, but it is our thought initially that we would present the same information to town meeting members that we've presented to the public and to the Board, that would show both borrowing schedules for the use of the gift and not the use of the gift.
Because of the current wording in the warrant is a sum of monies, and I assume that the intention would be to provide a recommended sum?
Through the Chair, that's correct. The motion on the town meeting floor, and I return to Town Council just to make sure I say this right, but the motion on the town meeting floor would identify the sum of money to be authorized for appropriation through borrowing or otherwise, and also at that time, I believe we would have to identify the, or otherwise if it was not borrowing.
Okay. So I have one other kind of comment on this whole process, and I've heard a lot of discussion about process, and why didn't we hear about this sooner, and let's deal with it on a case-by-case basis, and those sorts of things. And what I've really found lacking, to be quite honest, is there's no vision for this town, right? So I've heard accusations of secret agendas to not buy the land, and, you know, in cahoots with the developer, and I'm probably three cycles away from the gossip, you know, center to get this information, but, you know, I see, I look at the town administration and I say, well, they have some guiding principles, and they're looking forward a little bit in terms of financials. I think we've done a good job recently on roads, things like that, but those are very municipal goals, right? They're very tactical, they're very heads-down for the administration. So when something like this came up, the only sort of guidelines they have to look at are, how is this going to affect our bottom line? You know, if somebody says, hey, we need $3 million, you can only imagine the reaction after all the careful planning that's gone into, you know, stabilizing our finances, to say, geez, $3 million, right? Where are we going to get that? You know, this seems like it could be bad news. And to get it on such short notice, which is a timeline that I don't think is accidental, you know, you can see how they can scramble to come up with these numbers and things. But what we really lack, I think, is a vision as a community, as what do we want Auburn to be, right? Something that can guide these kinds of decisions. There's other 61A land out there. There's other commercial property out there. What if somebody comes in and says, I want to build 500 apartment buildings on Route 20 in the land there, you know, just inside of town? How do we react to that? We don't have a vision, we don't have a consensus, or even half a consensus, of how we would make that decision. So I find it difficult to say, we'll deal with that when it comes, because we'll be in the exact same situation. We'll have meeting after meeting, and then you'll get everyone's opinion. But without any guiding principles, we don't have a way to make those kinds of decisions. And I know it is difficult to kind of make that forward-looking, right? People are busy. People only come to these meetings when there's really some hot-button issue, right? But that is part of being a leader, right? So we need outreach, you need advocacy, you need engagement with the community. You can't put a meeting notice up, throw it on TV, and hope for a whole bunch of people to get involved. You have to cheerlead it. You have to go out there and say, look, we want to know, what do you want Auburn to be? You know, there are civic organizations, there are schools, there are the senior center, there are all these avenues to get out there and engage and say, what should Auburn be? And let's use these principles that we put together to say, should we buy open land? Should we buy it all? Should we develop a bunch of houses on it? Should we develop a bunch of apartments? How much growth do we want? A few houses at a time? A whole development at a time? Will that impact our schools? We can't make those decisions unless we look forward, and that's something that I would challenge everybody to start thinking, right? What do you want Auburn to be five years from now? 10 years from now? Not Worcester? Okay, right? A quaint little New England village? Okay. But, you know, these are the things that have kind of frustrated me as I've watched on TV, and I've had people, you know, tell me, well, I want to buy this, you know, and there's obviously, there's something there. They have reasons they went to town to prevent that development from going in there. We should find out what they are, because we're probably going to have the same discussion next year or the year after. Okay? Thank you.
Just one moment, please. I just want to address a couple issues. The town manager's going to talk about our open space plan, and Mr. Carpenter may want to discuss the master plan.
Through the Chair, the Chair has asked me to just make it clear, you're right, the town needs a vision. The last plan that was done, the last overall plan that was done for the town, major plan called a master plan, was completed and submitted in 2007. That's when it was approved by all the boards and commissions in town. Those master plans are generally 10-year plans. It takes approximately two to three years to complete a master plan. It looks like the town started, and I would defer to Selectmen Carpenter for this, but it took two to three years to complete it at that point. From the town administration's perspective, we are building into this year's budget, the FY16 budget, A-line item that we'd like to request when we get there for the, to start updating the master plan, because you have to start two years before it expires. So if we start in FY16, that will give us two years to complete a master plan. So I couldn't agree with you more. We have to update it. Things have changed since 2005, '06, '07. Economically, a lot of things changed. Land-wise, a lot of things changed. What might have been going on in 2005 and '07 with development staggered for a while, and now it may be coming back. So it's absolutely the time to look at that. As a component of the master plan, there was an open space planning process that was done, again, 2006, 2007. It's my understanding that open space plan, it started, but the plan was never actually submitted or accepted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So in 2011, town administration put together an open space committee, and the committee worked for two and a half years on that plan, and submitted the plan this past June. So June was the updated version of the, what you call the draft open space plan, which the state now has before it. It's considered submitted on our end, they're just going through the process, and that open space plan, I know there were several meetings that were held for that open space plan, several public meetings. There is a vision in there, there are sections in there that show all of the maps. It outlines all of the 61A lands, so I encourage you, it's online, to go take a look at it. The map is online, and it does show what the lands are, that is, chapter lands, the 61A, the 61B, and it also identified an action plan for the town to proceed. When we went back and looked back in 2006, 2007, it looks like there had been a suggestion to look at a CPA, which is a Community Preservation Act, and I don't believe any action, I know no action was ever taken on that, but it was brought up at that time. A couple of other things were brought up, including the need to put together a process. So when a 61A notification came through, the town would have a process in place for engaging the community. That piece of it is in the master plan, but we found no evidence of that happening. So from our perspective, we would like to make sure that that gets done this time, that it is great to have the plans, and the plan was excellent, it was an effort by a number of different groups, but now we have to really focus on implementation of the plan. So there's been some great ideas in the plan, and I know several people have said it had some of those ideas going forward. We may have had some pieces in place, but now's the time to do that. If this issue has brought open space and preservation and conservation to the forefront, then it's time to start looking at what other options may be out there that may not have been around in 2007. So it's a great opportunity to do it. We'd like to get that master planning process started next fiscal year, and encourage everyone to participate and come with your ideas, and make sure that priorities are set, because it is very difficult, if you don't have that plan, to react as things come up. And that really is what is happening. So we need to look at a number of different options, including an option that we've been discussing internally that we mentioned, which may be coming up with another financial policy, if not a policy, a strategy for the set aside of a certain amount of the budget every year into a fund for the preservation of open space. So that could be something that could be built into the budget, just like some of the other commitments are on behalf of the town, such as capital. So we will let you know as the budget process goes through, but it is, for us, it's been great to hear that people want to get involved in this, because it is hard to get, people are busy, it's hard to do it, and we would be looking for, you know, a master plan committee. It's a major public process. The CMRPC would be involved in it, which is the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, I'm assuming would be involved, they were involved last time. And one other mention, I noticed in that master plan, back in 2002, the CMRPC had done a growth analysis for the town of Auburn, and that clearly needs to be updated. That's, you know, 12 years ago that it was released, so my guess is it could have been even 13, 14 years ago, they started working on the numbers. But that answers exactly some of the things that you were suggesting, sir, it was what happens when you build out the maximum capacity of all the land that's available? What would the impact on the schools be? What would the impact on the services be? How would the town absorb that from a police, fire, and school standpoint? And that's the kind of analysis that CMRPC did. Again, the last one I could find was 2002, so some of the assumptions and premises that are in it are no longer the same, but that would be, what I would hope would be a component of the master planning process.
Thank you. And just before we move on, and I know it's not intentional, but after four different phones, I'm just going to ask everyone to just make sure that your cellphones are off, if not off, just at least make sure that the ringers are off. Thank you. Did you have anything, Mr. Carpenter, or continue? Okay, over here in the, can't see you. Go ahead.
The master plan process is cheerleading by the-
He can go up, he's just going to wrap it up.
-planning board, and Mr. Proudey was on a master plan committee in 1985, and I see Bob Regranger, who was also on the 1985 master plan. So they know what it's like, but basically, a master plan looks at every department of the town. So it isn't, you'll hear people talk about, the school department has a master plan. No, the town has a master plan. The planning board working through, whether it's administration, and it should be with administration and the, and the boards, the elected and appointed boards, will come up with that vision. They'll identify what's going on. Obviously, the '85 plan, there were tons and tons of people who came out for that. The 2007 plan, a trickle showed up. So it is important. The open space plan that was just approved this year, I think in April, was a couple years in the making, and I was not on the committee, other concerned citizens were, and I did attend the, I attended several of the meetings. This is how we get grant money. This is how the town, this parcel probably will not be eligible for grant money, because it's not identified on that open space plan. So that's why it's important, when I said, to show up and tell us, because we need your help. It wasn't to make you feel bad, it wasn't to insult anybody, it was honestly to tell you that, as officials, we need help. We don't know everything, we need your input. You live in the neighborhoods, you know what the traffic volume is. I drive on Packchuck a lot, but I don't live there. So I don't know what stressors you have at certain times of day. I can guess the school, when it's in session, can be a problem, as far as moving to and fro into the city, but I don't know that, because I'm not there in the morning. So we do need your help when we're doing these plans, and it is very important that as many people can show up as they can and share their thoughts, so that we can do a good plan for the town. So that's my five cents.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. If you could give your name and address for the record again, please?
Kurt Shallow, S-H-A-L-L-O-W, 6 Stonebridge Road. Just quickly, to your point, that's why we are here, to help you. You're right, you don't walk the area, and, but everybody here does. They can tell you when the turkeys walk across their lawn, they can tell you when the coyotes howl, they can tell you when the deer are going to come through, okay? They can tell you when all their flowers are gone, they can tell you why, because of the wildlife that are there. So we are here to help you. But actually, I come here for a couple of reasons. One is just a level of clarification to the Assistant Town Manager. Is S&amp;P the only rating agency we use in the town?
No, we use Moody's as well.
Okay, but you didn't speak to Moody's, I don't think, did you?
I did. Moody's is our current AA3 rating.
Okay. Any prognosis on where that looks?
That's the one we got a positive outlook on.
Oh, I thought you said it was S&amp;P?
No.
Okay.
S&amp;P, we were rated in September as well.
Okay.
We got a double A plus, one shy of the highest rating a community can receive.
Okay, and both are a factor in borrowing?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't use Fitch, we don't use AM Best, Weiss, none of those?
No.
Okay. So just a quick point about Moody's and S&amp;P, and the others for that matter. I have vast experience with all of them, vast, okay? And they're reasonable people, right? They're not unreasonable, they don't come in here, you know, like stormtroopers to tell you, you're making mistakes. When you explain to them what you're doing and why you're doing it, they come at it with a reasonable approach. So when we talk about the positive outlook from Moody's, I can guarantee you one thing on a positive outlook. All it guarantees you is 365 days of wishful thinking, okay? Because at the end of that period of time, you will sit with them and it will go again. It does not inherently tip their hand that they're going to raise you, it does not tip their hand that they're not. It's simply a full analysis of what they've done and why they have a positive outlook. I would suspect they have commentary around the positive outlook too, which you got into, but I would tell you this, it doesn't guarantee anything except 365 days of wishful thinking and hoping, but that's not the whole point. What I really want us to understand is, we're going to buy the land one way or another. We're going to fund the land one way or the other, whether it's with the blessing of a million-dollar gift or some other way. And I just want to explain what I mean by that. You will never have an opportunity to buy this land at less cost than you do today, because today, you could buy it for $1.8 million, peg the cost, freeze the cost, borrow for the cost, determine your cost on a 12, 26, 30-year basis. Easily pegged, easily freeze, easily identified, I think you did a great job in explaining that. But if you pass, you pass on your opportunity to create a legacy, you pass on your opportunity to buy this at the lowest cost ever, you will forever be investing in infrastructure to fix the land and the pieces that move on the land, whether it's sewage, lights, police and fire, schools. So be clear, you'll be forever borrowing on that land, forever. But here's the difference. If you borrowed today, you will never have an opportunity to borrow at interest rates as low as they are today. But if you pass on your legacy, and you pass on your opportunity to buy this land at the lowest cost ever possible, when you go to borrow in the future for infrastructure, for sewer, for light, for fire, for police, for school, your interest rates will be significantly higher. Whereas anybody sitting here, when you talk about mortgages, it's a great example, let's talk about that. Why are people springing to buy houses now? Why? We know why. Rates are low. Which way would anybody in this room guess interest rates are going? They're going up. We know they're going up. The Fed is going to ease on their QE, right? We know the rates are going to go up, they're going to go up significantly. But unfortunately, if you pass, and then you have to borrow on the infrastructure for this land, and you will have to borrow, you can't build what you're talking about building without expecting future generations to pay the price on your opportunity to pass on your legacy. You will borrow on this land, and you will come back at some point, you or someone in your seat, and look back and say, a million eight was the cheapest we could have paid for that land, the cheapest we could have paid, because now we're borrowing on infrastructure again and again, because it's not just one time. We'll fix the roads more than once, we'll fix the sewers more than once, we'll add schools, we'll increase school size, we'll add teachers, right? Countless things that will cost you on infrastructure, and you will borrow to pay for that infrastructure. But when you borrow to pay for that infrastructure, you will pay a significantly higher rate than you're paying now. And over time, the cost of that borrowing, if you pass on your legacy, will make the $1.8 million pale in comparison. Thank you.
Mr. Largeus, just give your name and address for the record, please.
Daniel E. Largeus, 39 Perry Place in Auburn, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Member, and third generation on my property. I called Ms. Jacobson the other day and asked some questions, some were answered tonight. The reason I called is I had seven phone calls and a couple neighbors stopping me here and there. If we do decide to take this million-dollar gift, the land stays as is, correct? Nothing can be done with this land, ever. Is it ever, or is it for the life of the donor?
Through the Chair, it's in perpetuity, forever.
Forever. So what is going to, when we purchase this property, what is going to happen to it? Who's going to maintain it? Is it going to end up being a jungle down there where the trees are growing and the meadows are gone, and the, you know, it just becomes a place for people to dump their trash on dock nights? Or if we don't take the gift and we buy it outright, maybe the town could do something with it? Again, the dog park that's been brought up numerous times, leveled off of ball fields, or, geez, maybe even a solar farm? I think that's one heck of a stipulation, stipulation on a million- I think that's one heck of a stipulation, stipulation on a million-dollar gift that now we're stuck with this property forever and can't do nothing with it. You know, when I was growing up in this town, I used to ride my horse to the Auburn Mall and do my shopping. Ride it home. I can remember going to the old coffee mug where Verizon is with my father. You know, now we're going to get stuck. And if we don't buy it, God forbid, all the people up there. And another thing, we need to look into a land preservation. Because, yeah, this might come back to bite us in the you-know-what. And I hope it doesn't. This is a big thing that, you know, the five of you up there have to make a big decision. I hope you're listening to the people. But I don't think that million-dollar gift is the way to go if we're going to have to sit on this thing forever. I really don't. So I hope you guys all make the right decision.
Thank you. Is there anyone else right here in front, please? Yep.
Jean Benoit, Appleton Road. My question is this: Is it negotiable with the donor that they would change their mind as to the use, other than walking trails, so that the land would be able to be utilized a little more? And also, if some other donor came forward to donate additional funds for that, or to help out with that, is that a possibility with the million-dollar one that we already have?
Well, I can say I'm not aware of any additional donation that, you know, anyone that has come forward. And I believe that the donors, the town administration has spoken with the donors several times regarding the use. And, you know, the donor has been pretty clear that it's for open space. So that would preclude dog parks and solar farms, things like that. It would just be walking trails, if we accept the gift.
Mr. Westerman?
My name's Kyle Westerman, Precinct 1. I just had a couple of questions. I mean, we're talking about money. Everybody agrees. Everybody hates to spend money. But if, in fact, we don't buy the land, what is it going to cost us? Because if I'm not mistaken, I mean, I could be wrong in the figures, but from what I understand, there's supposed to be like 40 upscale houses and basically 190 individual units.
I just want to be clear that the developer has not submitted a plan at all to the town.
Okay.
There is nothing submitted. What he showed at the October meeting was a plan from a surrounding community. But this is the unknown. I mean, we can, you know, we can say 190. We can, you know, it could be 150. It could be 250. It could be zero. It could be single-family homes. That's what it is. The developer has no obligation to tell the town what the potential use is besides residential. And that's what he identified in the notice.
Okay. But if, in fact, let's just go, let's guess.
Yeah, we've done that.
Yeah. Now, I'd much rather have a guarantee. If you have the land, whatever it might cost, the taxes, you know, it'll go up a little. But if, in fact, we don't take the land and you leave it out for the developer... Now, I mean, I've been in construction. I know how it goes. If you get it, you're going to build on it. Now, let's take a look. And they say it's two and a half kids per house that'll go to school, you know, and when you buy, you know, buy an apartment, whatever it is, at $7,500 per year per a kid to go to school. Let's talk about school buses. Who's going to pay for that? Let's talk about medical and things like that for the schools. Now, no matter how many houses they put up, but if they put up more houses, then we're going to talk about building new schools. I mean, what's the worst of the two subjects? Wouldn't it be better to have a guarantee that, you know, we get the land and we're happy? I mean, to me, you know, I took some of the figures, like you said. We've got to come in with extra teachers. You've got to pay the benefits, the cost of the schools if needed, water, sewer, electricity. You know, it just goes on and on. I mean, I know, you know, $3 million. If I had it, I'd be down at casino. But, I mean, I just don't want to see it spent for nothing. And to me, I'd much rather see the town buy the land, they're going to have something that'll be there and not go noplace.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'll quit while I'm ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? Mr. Proudy?
And we do have another issue we're going to be discussing on this property, so we're going to move it along after Mr. Proudy's comments.
Ron Proudy, P-R-O-U-T-Y, 11 Marion Ave. And I'm sorry to take your time again. I've done it now three weeks in a row. But you've taken a lot of my time. And really, my wife and I should be out for a nice dinner tonight because it's our anniversary. But we're here. Because we care a lot. We care a lot about this town. We've never lived in Pack Chug. We've never lived in Precinct 3. My wife lived in Precinct 2 and 4, and now 1. I've converted her, but I've lived in 1 all my life. But neither of us has ever lived in Pack Chug. When I get up here, or when I hear you talk, or when I see the figures on the board, somehow, despite of reading other things, somehow I think of comic books and Scrooge McDuck sitting in his treasure house on a huge pile of gold, running the coins through his hand. And, you know, I get that same idea about $6 million that we're sitting on, and we don't want to spend because sometime it might affect our bond rating, which would affect our interest rates on other projects that we might do in the future. There's something frustrating about that, about sitting on $6 million and then saying, "But we don't want to use any of it." Well, what is it for if it's not to make this a better town? I'm sick of hearing people say, "The land is only worth $300,000," and that person who says it lives in Spencer. Land, like your home, like your car, is worth whatever someone will pay for it. And someone will pay close to $3 million for this land. So it's worth that. The buyer sets the value, not the seller. The seller doesn't say, "Oh, it's only worth $300,000. That's all you have to pay me." It's worth close to $3 million. And someone much smarter than me, and I would submit probably a little smarter than some of you on the board, is willing to invest $1 million. Now, if someone has $1 million to invest, that person has probably been a heck of a lot more financially successful than I have and board members have. And we're here debating whether we should take that $1 million? I don't understand that. I don't understand it. I'm so glad you mentioned that we had had master plans before. Yeah, we had the first master plan in 1961. And then about every 10 years thereafter, early '70s, early '80s, early '90s, early 2000s, we had master plans. And every one of those master plans, I would be willing to bet, had an open space, town, land, complement to it. And we have never, never, as far as my memory goes, and I've been here long enough so I can't really trust it that well, but I never remember town meeting, boards of selectmen, assessors, I never remember buying a piece of land that was advocated that we buy by a master plan study. So we should have another study? So we can do just what we have with the past seven or eight? To me, that doesn't make sense. We've bought land if it looked good when it came up, or when people on a particular committee pushed for it then. So I don't see, when we have this opportunity in front of us, that there is any wisdom at all in saying, "Well, it might not be worth what we'd have to pay. We should do more studies. We should make more committees." You've had committees up here for the last three weeks. They weren't real committees, but they were like committees. And they were from all over the town. A number of them were town meeting members from other than Precinct 3. I don't know how you could get a better feeling for something than if you had listened to those three hearings that you've had. I would urge you to put aside whatever questions you have. It just doesn't make sense. It is not good finances. It may be good to someone who keeps track of the town's money, but it isn't good for townspeople who want, yes, a vision. There's no vision to saying, "Well, if we spend anything from our $6 million, it might cost us $8 or $10 more per household, per average household, for the next few years." I don't know what interest rates are going to do. I don't make that my business, though. But whatever they're going to do, they're going to do. And I don't see why we sit here and let bond rating firms tell us whether we have used our money wisely, or whether we really do use it wisely and invest it wisely in this piece of land. And I hope I don't have to come to a fourth vision of this hearing. I have never seen a hearing go that long before. Certainly not the way this has been dragged out. It seems to me if someone says to you, "I'll give you $1 million. That's more than a third of what it's going to cost you," that you wouldn't question it, that you wouldn't look for another answer, that you would take action. And I urge you to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Proudy. I'm going to have one more public comment, then I'm going to close it. Mr. Maher to public comment, because we do need to move on with the second item under this public hearing.
I have some different ways of looking at purchasing it. I will be brief. I'm sure you're excited every time I come up here, Madam Chairperson. But I need to clear the air about one thing. I used to be very political in Auburn many, many years ago. I served six years on the school committee. People are saying I'm running for selectman and that stuff. The only thing I'm running for is an airplane. I'm not running for anything. One exception: my wife says I should run for town meeting. And if I run for anything other than town meeting, please vote against me. So I just want you folks to know, this is not political. I did some research, and I talked to some serious people who are involved in finance that looked at the town's 2012 audit, 2013 audit. They went on Moody's and read all the reports about the town. People who specialize in bonds. Very knowledgeable people. And basically, I asked them a question. Tell me about if we use cash. And they indicated to me they didn't think there'd be a major problem with the use cash. I'm not advocating using the whole cash. I got the board members. I don't have one of these fancy things. I gave the board members some, Claire. They're from my office, is helping me. I bagged them on the way in. I only got a few of them, so share them around. I'm all paper.
I'm going to have to ask you to just get into the presentation, okay?
I'll get it out. Sure. I'll get it as fast as I can, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you.
I'm advocating that the town borrows out of free cash $932,500. That represents 11% of the $8.2 million you have on hand.
Are you on purchase option number two, the last page?
I'm on purchase option one.
Okay.
I'm going fast, but not that fast. I assume that 8/2 is correct. I got that off of CFO's numbers.
Okay.
No, it is not.
What is it?
$6,100,000.
Okay.
$6,189,000.
So what's the percentage on that, sir? $6 million. I'll let you decide. 15%?
Your number is stabilization and free cash, I believe, Mr. Maher.
The totals, total available funds. Is that $8 million, too? So that's $8 million, too. Okay. I just put town funds that were liquid at the Madam Chairperson. You guys can debate how to use them and all that. So out of our cash reserves, $932,500. If you have the million-dollar gift, it's going to get paid down. Okay? What it does is it takes our principal balance after the gift and cuts it in half. It gives the town a long-term debt of $932,500. Not a lot of money. We're touching part of our free cash, a reasonable thing. If you look at page 2, it shows you what my fancy accounting department did. Talked to them today, and they came up with this. It's a little analysis of the CFO's numbers. By taking that and cutting in half, that $1,865, it gets down to $11.40 a household. Okay? Versus $22.80 a household. You save taxpayers money. That's on a 10-year note. Okay? On a 26-year note, it's $6.84. Now, I'm not a municipal budget person. These are close numbers. You can work with them. What I am advocating here to this board is you give the town meeting three different options. Buy it with a gift. Buy it without the gift. I'd like you to maybe buy it with the gift and a contribution out of available funds. Very reasonable. I think it's a request that you ought to consider. And I think you ought to put into the town meeting members from day one here, as I heard from you guys, let the town meeting decide. Let the people decide. Well, okay, give them that option. It's reasonable. I know the CFO is not going to want to touch free cash, or whatever you call the combined cash totals. I understand that. And I got to tell you, the people I talked to were very impressed with the finances of Auburn and our rating. So I think you really ought to look at that. The second one is, I'm going to leave and just give a quick review. You can look at it. Under 61A, you walk into the shoes of the buyer. You take it over. There are terms in that offer to purchase that you should look at. I have a two and a half-page written legal opinion from a gentleman who does a great deal of work. He works for Franklin Trust. I got him through Mount Grace regarding the purchase and sales. Very enlightening. I'll share with everybody when this is all over. He also, I asked him a question. Can the town use any of the terms? Well, to be quite honest with you, $840,000 has no value to the town. It's 4% money, so let's just forget that. But there's $1 million in the purchase and sales agreement, folks. That is deferred for six years. No payments, no interest. This attorney advised me that when you go to finalize a purchase, sales, you can structure the deal in such a way, because this is the benefit Mr. Sundin has, in payout in six years, which you're not going to do. What you're going to do is you're going to go in and you're going to borrow $932,500. You're going to take... You're gonna take $932,000 out of free cash. And as the money comes in on the million dollars, you're gonna pay off your $1 million balance of the post in four years. It needs to be structured. It's very common practice in real estate to have term conditions. I would assume you know all about the terms in the offer and all these items. But if you haven't, look at it. And there's a benefit to Mr. Post here. And you can ask Town Council about this. I doubt he divides you. Most people wouldn't have. I just happened to stumble across it. That $1 million that Mr. Post owes Mr. Sundin in year six is called nonrecourse financing. And I'm sure that's all hit a bell, what that means. What it essentially means, folks, is that Sundin can walk. With limited risk. Mr. Post would rather be getting the million dollars five years, four years, or six years from now on an installment schedule with the gift, because towns don't default. They are much stronger than a private buyer. Everybody's gonna hout and hoot and say, "You can't do this. It's not legal." You can do it. There are people out there that say you can. I talked to Mount Grace. They put me in contact with the Franklin Trust, which manages 28,000 acres. Their corporate counsel says you can do it. And that's all he basically does, is that. You ought to, in Chapter 61A. And he's the gentleman who gave me a legal opinion. So I think these are two legitimate options. I'm afraid to look at the deferred money and try to explain that to town meetings, so please look at my first proposal in considering putting that in front of the town meeting as an option. It's our money. Everybody here who sits on that table, who lives in this town, it's our money. Let us decide at the town meeting how to spend our money. I think it's a reasonable request. I think we ought to at least give the people the option to look at this. Two final things before I leave. Just so we all have a clear understanding, I've done developments in town. And if I ever got in front of a planning board, when Mr. Prodigy was there, or Mr. Carpenter was there, and I says, "You ought to vote for this project, because it's a moneymaker." Residential developments are not moneymakers. Don't even think about it. Don't go there. It's just not the argument to have. The second thing is fair market value. I know Mr. Carpenter was talking about assessed value and fair market value, two different things. Assessed value has a purpose, and one purpose only, to raise tax revenue. A fair market value is a willing exchange between two parties. So please don't look at the assessed value of this property. I would probably buy most people's homes for assessed value and turn around and make more money. That's just the way it is with this. That's the real estate world, the fair market values. And if you do a, Mr. Holstrom was talking about future problems coming down. We haven't had a lot of Chapter 61s. We may get more. Who knows? Set up a procedure. Look at the Mount Grace material. So day one, when it hits your desk, the agreement, you have a built-in procedure that says, "Week one, we appoint a committee, project manager. We do this, this, and this." So when we get to the 60 days out, you know what you're doing. Week one, you get a written legal opinion. Is it a valid offer? All these sort of things is aboard. And I'm saying this in a very positive light. This is a new thing for us. I understand. We don't have a lot of 61s. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.[817.48][817.48][applause] Mr. Simoni?
Before we wrap this up, I just wanna...
We still have another item on the land.
No, I understand. And I realize that we're five minutes into our regular meeting time. But I'm just gonna put this to you one last time. Just cut to the chase. I've sat in on project meetings where we had to put together project plans. I've sat in on budget meetings. And at the end of every single of those plans, forecasting, whatever it is, the one thing that was briefly touched on was risk. Every single plan that I've ever been part of had to address the risk associated with any endeavor. Okay? I've sat here and listened to you for three weeks. I've done a lot of research. I've gone to the state's websites and other places to find information. There's definitely a risk either way we go. But based on what I've read, based on what I've seen, and based on what I've heard, I think the less risk for the town is to purchase the land. That's why I've taken the position that I would recommend to town meeting that we purchase the land. I don't know where the rest of the board stands, because I haven't heard anyone else take a position. But based on what I've seen, as far as I'm concerned, the less of the risk is for the town to purchase the land.[907.63][907.63][applause]
The next item we have is a discussion and potential vote on appointing a wetland scientist and civil engineer, excuse me, as agents of the town for purposes of surveying and assessing the 61A land. And so, because the town manager has spoken to a couple of us regarding this, I'm gonna let you start.
Through the chair. Through Town Council, we had requested of the owner of the land copies of any reports that may have been done on environmental or any other soil testing. And the response that came back this afternoon from the attorney for the seller was that there are no environmental reports on that property. There was no specific response with respect to the request on soil testing, but the seller could have conceivably thought that we were looking at the same type of reports, soil testing and environmental reports, where we were looking at soil testing with regard to wetlands. So we do not have any reports in hand on any testing or anything that's been done on that property. There's a good chance there has been no testing done on that property by the owner. It's been farmed. Our question was related to what types of products might have been used in the process of that farming. So we don't have any reports on that. In speaking to one of the selectmen, and I'll turn it over to the selectmen, the question was whether we could get a wetlands scientist and a civil engineer to walk the property with a selectman, who wanted to be able to get some additional information on the property prior to making a decision. And as that was alluded to, the seller is only allowing officials of the town to walk on the property, meaning elected officials, town employees. So it is our recommendation that perhaps if the board wanted to get a wetland scientist and/or a civil engineer to have the opportunity to access that property, that the way to do that would be for the board to discuss and potentially take a vote to appoint a wetland scientist or a, and/or a civil engineer. That way, legally, by the appointment of that, it would be an agent of the town. And as an agent of the town, then the seller, under Chapter 61A, Section 14, would have to allow the town, with reasonable notification, to bring the agents of the town on the land for the purposes of surveying. There's another section within that same, another component of that section that also allows soil testing as it relates to Title V, Septic. So the item is on here for discussion, because I know it has been brought up in the last couple of weeks. We've been trying to find a way to get additional information on the land so the board can have a decision, more information to make that decision. So this is on here for the board to discuss whether you would like to hire or appoint a wetland scientist and civil engineer as agents of the town.
Okay. Mr. Simoni?
What would be the terms of the appointment? What, you know, what are we looking at for a timeline compensation? And what is the end game here for appointing someone to do this? I mean, we're, we already know we're up against the timeline. We're sending this to town meeting next week. So what, how and why is this information gonna be digested? Because it's certainly not gonna be done before town meeting. So I don't really see the point.
Mr. Carpenter?
Well...
I'm asking a que...
Right, he's the one that asked to have it put on the agenda.
I'm the person who asked.
Mr. Carpenter asked to have it put on the agenda.
And the purpose is for me to walk with people that not only do I admire, but I trust, to give me the information that I need to evaluate this piece of property and see what can be there. What laws apply, and the like. So the two people are town residents. They are willing to do this at no cost. Certainly, we can post a site walk so that all selectmen can benefit from Dr. Rockwood and Dave Delalas' walk on the site with Mr. Post. And I would encourage us to do so. So that's the reason why Mr. Post will not allow me to walk on the property with anyone who is not a town official. These individuals, first of all, we don't have a wetland scientist. We don't have anybody in the land use department that has the requirements to actually evaluate wetlands. Dr. Rockwood has been used by the Conservation Commission. He is, as a consultant, many, many times. He has the qualifications plus, plus, plus. And Mr. Delalas is a civil engineer with a degree from WPI, who not only has an eye on road construction, but on development. The costs, all of those things. So personally, for me, that's where I'm looking at it. I'm trying to evaluate this piece of property. I'm trying to see where is the risk? Where is the greater risk? So in that, Mr. Post has refused to allow selectmen to walk on the property with people other than town officials. I would like these two gentlemen designated as agents of the board. They will make, they will walk the site, look at the approved plans, and we'll see what's going on.
Mr. Simoni?
So, I'm assuming that you, through the chair, I'm assuming you'd be wanting to do this prior to town meeting next week?
Yes. I would've done it a week ago, but Mr. Post said no. So, and then we went back to Mr. Post through his attorney, and he said no twice. So, you know, we have qualified people. They're not looky-loos. They're not people who are interested, just any sort of interest other than helping the community and helping the board of selectmen with some questions.
I'll just say, I don't have an issue with either one of them. Let me just say that. Specifically, the wetland scientist. But I too had asked the town manager about our own engineer, Bill Coyle. So I'm just wondering what we would get from Mr. Delalas and that we wouldn't get from our own engineer. I just want to have an argument. You know, we have our own civil engineer, so I'm, to make an argument to Mr. Post that, you know, why we need a second engineer.
Well, you have an individual who spent 20 years on the planning board, who knows the terrain, knows the soil type, knows all of the facts that are up there. And not only do I admire and respect the town engineer, but I don't think it is appropriate or fair to say, "Come out on a Saturday" to accommodate me, when I can get the information from someone, a town resident, at no cost and at no inconvenience to a town employee.
So my only concern would be what information we would expect to gain from this, and how members of the board would use this information, as well as any potential issues that may arise. How we take that to the next step to have it certified.
I don't think you need to certify it. If you have questions related to it, and maybe I'm just putting on my planning board hat, and I wanna look at it, see it, see what can physically fit on that property, and see what other challenges exist. Because that does go to fair market value. Yes, the assessed value is what we're gonna carry on our books. It's not the $3 million. It's not fair market value. So that is an important figure. No matter where the assessor comes from, she's a professional. We shouldn't question, because she doesn't live in town, that she's somehow lowballing the number. You know, I think that's not fair to her. I don't think that's fair to any of our employees, because I think they do a great job. I think they've worked extremely hard for us. Yes, I would love to see more town residents in positions of authority in town. But you know what? I think we've done fairly well, if not exceptionally, with the people that boards of selectmen have hired, planning boards have hired, school committees have hired. You know, any other board, parks commission, you know, sewer commission have hired. I think we've done well. So I don't appreciate, and I would ask people not to say that somehow, because individuals don't live in town, that they're somehow changing the numbers to suit a particular prejudice. Because I've asked all of them a million questions and more. And I'll tell you, they come back and they give me an answer, and they've been creative, and they've talked me through the process. So, you know, I think we're very fortunate to have the people we have. You know, when and if they choose to leave, you know, maybe a town resident will step up who wants to live and work in town. But I can tell you, we had a planner who lived in town, one, and he hated it. So much that he didn't last more than two years, and he moved to a neighboring community because he didn't enjoy working and living in the same town. So, I mean, there's pros and cons to both, certainly. But I think we have some outstanding professionals who work for us, and I don't think that we should question their ethical standards or question their job performance, because they don't sleep 01501.
Mr. Carpenter, I'll entertain that motion. Excuse me, I don't wanna hear yelling out from the audience, please. I want, I'd appreciate no outbursts from the audience right now. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion with names, please.
I make a motion that the board of selectmen appoint John Rockwood and Dave Delalas as agents of the board for the purposes of surveying and assessing 61A land.
That would be a manager's appointment. The board authorized the... Town manager?
Well, then I will change it to, yes, the manager shall appoint agents...
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Under discussion, I'll just ask that you consider including in your motion to make this walk available to all selectmen.
Certainly. I don't think that needs to be part of the motion, but I'll happily do so, Madam Chair.
Just to be clear, in case we've had issues with accessing...
Well, are you opening this? Are you gonna include in the motion all, any town official who wants to? Because that seems to be part of, I mean, basically, you could have 100 and something town meeting members going down there too, if they wanted to, it seems. Which I'm not against. I'm just...
Right. The purchase and sale, does state town officials? Would that include town meeting members?
Madam Chair, through you. The statute allows for the town to have the right at reasonable time and with reasonable notice to enter upon the land for the purposes of inspection and soil testing or any other types of testing that it wanted to do. So if you were to have other town officials who would wanna participate, we would have to give the owner a reasonable time, and give him some reasonable notice, and try to work out some kind of a procedure if there was 120-plus people who wanted to go visit the site.
This is the reason why this should've been brought to the board back in September. Not now. We should've been talking about this two months ago.
But we're here today, so we have to move forward.
But under discussion, there are several people who seem to have something to say. So I'd like to allow the public to be part of the discussion.
This is a board of selectmen authorizing the town manager to appoint these two individuals. So is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint Mr. Delalas and Mr. Rockwood as officials, as agents of the town for purposes of surveying and assessing the land? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No one opposed. Okay. So we do have...
I'm actually abstaining from that vote.
Okay. Mr. Simoni, abstained. Okay. Did you have something?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to keep it brief, please.
Need me to state my name again? Kurt Schello, S-H-A-L-L-O-W, 6 Stonebridge Road, 01501. I have to agree with Mr. ... I have absolutely no idea of the value of what you just voted on. I mean, let's just play it forward. And you bring your self-determined experts, and they say, "Can't fit that here." What do you do with that? Or they come back and they say, "Yeah, you can build that here." What do you do with that? I mean, I guess, to the point, I don't know what the end game is. So, I mean, what is it you're... They can only tell you what it can tell you, whatever it is. And at the end, there's nothing you can do with the information. I don't get it. It's speculative at best, right? You're not paying them, which means the value of their opinion is worth what you pay. You're not paying them, which means the value of their opinion is worth what you pay. They're not liable when you don't pay them anything for their services, period. The second thing I'd say is, I don't understand why that has to happen. Doesn't the purchase and sale afford us any protection? Once we sign a PNS, don't we have the right to do various things that ensure we're making a proper purchase? I guess I don't understand why we have to assure that ahead of time versus through the purchase and sale process. I don't know. When I buy a house, the purchase and sale is designed to allow me to do things like an inspection. I'm just saying. I don't understand the end game here. And lastly, I've sat here for three weeks, okay, and not criticized individuals, okay, and not blamed anyone for having a biased opinion. I've criticized numbers, I've criticized philosophies, I've taken vehement disagreement with approaches and things that were said, but never personal. But I have to tell you, for those three weeks, when you've spoken, you've personalized everything. And I find that offensive as a taxpayer, I find it offensive as a resident, and I find it offensive to watch the Board of Selectmen sit there and not defend the town when someone says that about people in this town, that they want to see other people up here, that it shouldn't be just a self-serving property. What is wrong with me living in that precinct, being in a butter, expressing my discontent? What's wrong? That's what democracy is, that's what this process is. For you to stand there or sit there and hold yourself holier-than-thou, that we are wrong for bringing to you our opinion, really bothers me. And I understand where you sit on this whole opinion, okay? I watch the Board of Selectmen, some are silent, some are vocal. I have to be honest, I get a feel for where each person is. When I listen to you talk about it, it's not about the issue, it's about the people. I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you, excuse me, I'm going to caution people to not make this personal, we need to wrap this up, I don't think it's doing anyone a service by making this personal. I have sat here for three meetings as well, and there have been some very personal comments made about this board as well. So I'm going to ask that, you know, we're moving in the right direction here, we're ready to move to town meeting, you know, people may believe that they have a sense of where the board is going, I don't believe that you do, and I'm going to ask you to be respectful and just wrap this up. Mrs. Proudy, Mr. Kosky, and I'm going to allow Mr. Maher to speak briefly once more, and then we'll finish with Mr. Largess, and I'm going to ask you all to be brief. I'll be brief.
I have a question. If we accept the $1 million, we can't do anything with the land, right? So, there is probably nobody in this room or in the town of Auburn who has more respect for Dave Delalas and Bill Coyle than me. Okay? I want that known now. I felt the same way when I was on the Board of Selectmen. They're two people whose integrity is beyond reproach. However, why, if you've got, if you buy it, if we buy it, and I hope we do, we can't do anything with it if we accept the $1 million? And why would we turn down the $1 million? So, why do you need all these reports? Or is it to back a decision not to buy?
Paul Kosky, K-O-S-K-Y, Precinct 1, 18 Jade Hill Road.
Lift up the microphone, thank you.
I have a bad back.
That's all.
First of all, this property has gone through the entire process, all right? There were two different subdivisions approved up there. The way the subdivisions are approved are, one, they come usually before a board, and they ask questions, what do we need to do? It goes before Bill Coyle, the fire chief, the police chief, all the town, all the town department heads, and they look at it and they suggest things to the developer, in this case, Mr. Post. Mr. Post then hires an engineer, the engineer comes in, and he designs the project, which he did, both projects. They then go through a process of peer review. In other words, the engineer that Mr. Post hired, he has to pay for another engineering firm to go through his entire process and tell us what's wrong with it. Then it goes before conservation. If there was anything wrong with the land with conservation, I'm sure that it would have been brought up. Then he goes before the ZBA, then he goes before the planning board. Have they have done land studies, it's been assessed, they've done wetland studies, all those studies have been done. So, to send somebody in there to do all those studies again in three days is, in my opinion, worthless, especially since when the project was approved by the planning board, Mr. Delalas was chairman of the planning board. There might be an ethics violation.
I'll just say, what I heard from Mr. Carpenter is that he's one to, that it will be voting on this project, and he's asked for himself to help aid him in making this decision. Mr. Maher, and then Mr. Delalas, and yes, I'll let you speak, I didn't see that you had your hand up. And I'm going to ask everyone to keep it brief, please.
Two things, just get copies of the conservation files, I think would be the first place, and the planning board files, because they'll have a heck of a lot more data than what you're going to have from a preliminary site walk with the two guys. Dave's a friend of mine, I've known Dave a number of years, but he doesn't really do active development, I would almost recommend Mr. Coyle instead of. Rockwood is an outstanding reputation in the business, so I think that's a consideration. The second thing is, is consideration of the board on their agenda. You have your vote tonight at pretty far down, all these people here are obviously interested, you're going to make them sit around for a couple hours, considering doing your vote earlier. I'm sure my colleagues in the chamber will be glad to wait, so consider that, and I echo the chairman's statement regarding personality conflicts, we ought to avoid those.
Thank you.
We'll have a spirited debate at the town meeting. So maybe you could consider doing the agenda, or do you want all these people to have to kind of hang out for a couple hours?
Thank you. Mr. Largess.
Daniel Largess, Precinct 4. One of the questions I had asked town manager, all ties are severed with Mr. Post when the sale is purchased, correct? We were gonna, you were gonna call me back on this? Once we purchase the land, Mr. Post has nothing to do with this anymore, can't farm it, can't grow tomatoes, potatoes, or any other thing on it. Hey, is that correct?
Go ahead.
Through the chair, yes, we had a conversation on Friday, and that's what I said, that once the town purchases the land, the town is the owner of the land. So, if the town accepts the donation, the town would own the land for town use, but under no circumstance would the town buy the land and the current landlord have any interest in the land.
Just wanted to make sure, I thank you.
Claire Early, E-A-R-L-E-Y. I would just like to reiterate the fact of fair market value as opposed to assessed value. I've been a realtor in town for over 10 years. First thing I tell anybody when they do CMA on their house, ignore the assessed value, it's only tax purposes. The value of a house, a land, a condo, anything, is what a buyer is willing to pay for it, just like Mr. Proudy said. I overlook this land, it is absolutely gorgeous, and I see nothing wrong with purchasing it and keeping it for open space. Thank you.
Thank you. So, does the board want to take up Agenda Item 6B? Do we want to move it up? Do we want to take a brief recess?
We're wishing to move up Agenda Item 6B, I think it's the least we can do for these folks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, just one moment, please.
Can they take up?
There may be a legal issue that we need to address.
Their main Agenda item, take it out of order with no military.
Okay, yes. So, we've moved up Agenda Item 6B, which is a vote on a recommendation of the November 18th, 2014 Special Town Meeting Warrant Article.
I just need to ensure.
Okay. So, we're almost ready to move on to town meeting. The warrant article is to request town meeting to authorize funding for the purchase of the land on Packard Dog Hill. It does not designate a funding mechanism, it gives town meeting the options presented tonight, and in that presentation, it does list, by the CFO, town administration, specifically the CFO's recommended borrowing option. So, I will entertain a motion if board members are so inclined to recommend town meeting authorize the funding mechanism to purchase the land designated as 61A by Mr. Post.
So moved.
Is there a second? We're under discussion?
The motion is to approve.
It's, the motion is to recommend, because we, it's premature to recommend the purchase, we cannot authorize the purchase until we have a funding mechanism in place through town meeting. So we are recommending to town meeting that they authorize the funding to purchase the land on South Hold Road. Is there any further discussion? I'll do a roll call so that all residents are sure of the vote. Mr. Carpenter?
I'm not prepared to vote until I walk, so.
We had a second by Mr., you seconded this motion, correct? Mr. Simoneon?
So I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoneon?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I'll entertain a brief. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Mrs. Skarsgård? We do have Ex-Golf coming up first, okay?
No, I just wanted to get everything up and running. I had a problem and needed to go down.
If everyone could quiet down, please, I'm calling the meeting back to order. And please make sure your cellphones are shut off, or at least silenced. So, the next Agenda item is Ex-Golf New England, a wine and malt liquor license at 440 Washington Street, a 7:00 PM hearing. I'll also entertain a motion, because they have two items on the agenda that we can take at the same time, to move up Agenda Item 6A, Entertainment License and Common Victulus License, Ex-Golf New England, 440 Washington Street. Is there a motion to move that item up to the public?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second? All those in favor, any opposed?
Aye.
Is there a motion to open the 7 o'clock hearing for Ex-Golf New England Wine and Malt License at 440 Washington Street? All those in favor, any opposed or voted? Is the applicant here? If you could come up to the microphone, please. It's nice to see you again. I assumed that the issues of the butter notification were taken care of.
Sorry about that.
Nope, not a problem, all our Ts across and our Is dotted, so, welcome. If you could give your name for the record, please.
My name is Tom Seibert.
My name's Joe Gray.
Okay. And if you could tell us a little bit about why you're here before the board tonight regarding your license?
Sure. We're here for a wine and malt license, we're opening up an indoor golf simulator company in Auburn on, at 440 Washington Street. Just something to supplement the indoor golfing is basically why we're going for it.
Okay. Do board members have questions? You have a complete packet? I'll start, if no members have any questions. Do either one of you have any experience with alcohol service, any familiarity with tip certification?
We don't have alcohol service, but we already have a name and number, and I've spoken to a lady about giving tips training to us and our employees that we hire.
Okay. And how many employees do you expect to be serving alcohol?
Well, at maximum, we would have six employees, but they would be all part-time people, they wouldn't be all in the place at the same time.
Okay.
And there would be no more than three people working at one time.
Okay. Six part-time employees who would be tip certified and trained in service of alcohol? Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, is this going to be like a pub-style?
No.
Wine and malt, or is, how does this incorporate into the golf?
The business is an indoor golf simulator business, and there are two aspects to the business. One aspect is entertainment, in which people come in and play, actually hit a golf ball, and they play on a simulator that projects an image of a golf course. And they select a course to play from a list of world-famous courses, and they actually play around a golf. They don't pay a fee for the golf, for the, to play a course, they rent the simulator time. The second aspect of the business is golf fitting, club fitting, instruction, and swing analysis. And it's a different part of the business, it's more pointed towards instruction. So, we have a golf simulator business, not a liquor business. We don't have a bar. We happen, we want to serve beer and wine to supplement the indoor golf business, but it's not a bar.
Thank you.
Mr. Simoneon?
So, based on what you just said, I'm assuming that someone could come in and play an entire 18-hole golf course? And, you know, we're talking possibly being in the simulator for a few hours, right?
Well, at $50 an hour, they probably won't be in there any off along.
Well, I mean, I guess it depends, can you, can you help me out and rig the simulator to take a few strokes on it? No, I'm just kidding. So, outside of the simulator, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the drawing that's enclosed in the packet. Outside of that, that would be the area where people would be, where you would be serving alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're talking about people just coming in and hanging out for an hour or so, and the majority of the time is, I imagine, going to be spent in the simulator anyway? That's pretty much, or taking lessons or doing the swing analysis?
Yes, our layout has a small bar in it, it's about eight feet long.
Okay.
And it has room for four bar stools.
Oh, all right.
Four is a magic number for golf, it's generally played by foursomes. So, if you see the seating in front of the simulator, there's a table and three seats, because somebody's always got to be up there playing golf.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
So, going back to the diagram and looking at those tables with the three chairs, and also there's three tables with four chairs, and then the four stools at the bar area. So, is it the expectation that, once you purchase beer or wine, that you can move around the area to any of those areas, the tables?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my question would be, you know, what steps will you take to ensure that, once alcohol leaves the immediate bar area where the server would be responsible for checking the identification? What steps will you take to ensure that there's no one, you know, underage in those other areas that would have access to the alcohol that was purchased? Will you have employees moving around the area specifically if you feel there are some underage people in the, you know, in the, in your business at that time?
Yes. Ideally, we'll have three employees, one will be at the service counter, a greeting center, and they will be, you know, taking payments for the simulator, booking times, answering the phone. I will manage the business, I'm a day-to-day business, and I'm going to be roaming over the whole place. And then we plan to have a bartender slash server on busy times, but the place is open so you can see everything. It's very visible, it's only 3,000 square feet. It's not, it's not a, it's not a place where you can go hide and be out of sight, it's all open.
Okay. And as I've made a recommendation to all other license holders, it's best if you ask for an identification from everyone? ask for an identification from everyone?
Yes.
That way, that way you don't miss anyone.
Exactly. Exactly. We've talked about that, that exact subject today.
Okay. Great. Do board members have any further questions or comments? So first, we can, are there any butters here who wanted to speak? Is there any, any public comment regarding this license? First, we'll take action on the, well, first, we, we have the common victualist license as well. Do we have, because before I close the hearing, are there any questions for the applicants regarding the common victualist license as well? So first, I'll take a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is closed. First, I'll entertain a motion regarding the application for the license.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state in town, in any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon, upon it, excuse me. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So now, in your packet regarding the common victualist license, you have the report from DCG, basically saying that there were, they met, there were no issues with respect to the issuance of the license, so they are not recommending any conditions. Is there a motion regarding the common victualist license?
I'll make the motion to approve the licenses, provided that all applicable requirements of the state in town, in any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with any of the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the licenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Good luck with your new business.
Thank you very much.
Both licenses were approved.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We just, oh, was there the, a third one for, hold on one second? We did the com invict. Do, do we wanna do them separately? Entertainment, Ian? Okay. Because I didn't include the entertainment license in my language, although I moved them both up, is there a motion to approve the entertainment license?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. Our next item is a tax classification hearing. We're long past the seven, ten hour, so is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? The hearing is open. So first, we are going to hear from Ms. Skarsgård. Good evening.
Good evening. A fun night of the year. Just give me a second here to finish. Let me know what I'm doing here. Looks like I got it. Does everybody that wants a copy of the presentation have one? You need a copy? There's some more up here. Okay, so, um, just kind of a little disclaimer. The calculations for the tax rate and other numbers are estimated at the time of preparation, so they're not based on any future purchase or borrowing. It's based on the budget as it stands right now. There also may be additional information and slides that are included in the handout. There aren't tonight, but there could, at some, sometimes there are. And the purpose of the classification hearing is to, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six, allows a shift in the tax burden between the property classes. This does not change the total tax levy for the community, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. Even though there are four votes that are taken tonight, that's the one everybody pays attention to. What this hearing does not do is, it does not determine the tax rate for the town, it only determines the distribution. It does not allocate funding, and it does not determine how much money can be raised or the method of appropriation. Only town meeting members determine what the tax levy will be. There are four votes that are gonna be taken. The first is a residential factor. It shifts the tax rate between the residential and commercial properties. Second vote that we take is an open space discount, which would shift the burden within the residential classes to discount open space. The third is a residential exemption, which shifts the burden within the residential classes. And then the fourth is the small commercial exemption, which shifts the burden within the commercial industrial classes to give a discount to qual, certain qualifying properties. The first one is the vote on the residential discount. It gives up to twenty percent discount to owner-occupied and residential properties. It shifts the burden from the less expensive homes onto the higher-priced homes and non-resident homes. It works in communities that have a large amount of vacation homes and non-owner-occupied properties to shift the burden onto. In a town like Auburn, where everything is pretty much owner-occupied, it really, it's not an exemption that works well here. The small commercial exemption is the final vote that you take, and that is, it has no effect on residential and personal property. Industrial properties do not qualify, they do share the burden in this exemption. The exemption goes to the property owner, it does not go to the business, and it relies on what's called the trickle-down effect to get to the business owner at the bottom of the chain. For multi-business properties, all the businesses on the property must qualify, they must have a value of less than one million dollars, and each business must have less than ten employees. Basically, in order to get the exemption, the assessors go through the list of businesses from the Department of Workforce Development, and we have to qualify each property by the businesses located in there individually. Businesses not on the list must be DBAs to be qualified by the assessor. Small incorporated businesses must be on the list. Each year, all properties not on the list need to refile applications with the Board of Assessors, so if it does not come through from the Department of Workforce Development, we require an application. Basically, this is going to shift the rate up to ten percent by annual vote between properties occupied by qualifying small businesses onto the other commercial industrial properties. Applications are taken after the tax classification hearing, and processing can delay setting the tax rate. Any exemptions not processed prior to submission of the recap will impact the overlay account. So just a little background, your tax rate is determined by town meeting appropriations and expenditures, and state and county charges. We pay using town revenues like excise, fees, enterprise funds, and other available funds, total taxable real estate and personal property, state aid and reimbursements, new growth, and debt exclusions and overrides. Just an overview of, of the revaluation process. Properties are adjusted annually to full and fair market values. Attributes affecting value include style, condition, interior, exterior features, and size. Values for commercial industrial properties are based on an income approach to value per the Department of Revenue requirements. Personal property is based on neck, netbook value minus, minus depreciation. And just kind of to give people an idea of the process, in a municipality, it is an appraisal process, but these values, by the time I am allowed to release these values, you have to keep in mind that they are approximately a year to a year and a half in arrears. That is by statute. So when you do have a changing market, those values are not always representative of the current market value. It is based on a period in time by law, and that period in time is January first preceding the fiscal year. So, as I say, those values are prepared using sales from the previous year, they're up to a year in arrears. This is just showing you the difference between two thousand and two thousand and fifteen, how our property classes have changed. You will see that our personal property has shrunk a little bit. We have seen some growth in our commercial properties, and our industrial properties have grown slightly. We've seen very little change in the personal property, very little change in the residential. Auburn has been fairly stable throughout the years. Our tax levy, basically, we have, the terms that we have, the levy limit, which is the maximum amount the town can levy in a given year. That is last year, last year's levy plus new growth plus two and a half percent. The maximum allowable levy is the levy limit plus any debt exclusions and overrides the town may have voted. The excess levy capacity is the levy limit minus the actual levy. Just to run you through the calculations for this year, we had thirty-six million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. That was our fiscal year two thousand and fourteen levy limit. We had no amended growth, so that is the total for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. For two thousand and fifteen, should we have chosen to levy up to the max, we have nine hundred and eight thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars that are, is available under proposition two and a half. Our new growth value this year is five hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars, and we have no overrides currently on the books. For two thousand and fifteen, we do have a debt exclusion of one million, four hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-six dollars. So we get down to the bottom, the maximum allowable levy for the town would be thirty-seven million, seven hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred and three dollars. So for the current year, we have had residential growth fairly level with what it's been in previous years. It's a fairly stable growth, it's not subject to being skewed by individual properties. Commercial growth this year is actually down. We've had a couple really good years where we had a lot of extraordinary growth. This year, it's, it's pretty much just settled down, and you have to keep in mind with commercial growth and industrial growth, it can be skewed by one large property coming online. The industrial growth is up for this year, but what you have to keep in mind, it's up compared to last year, and once you see the chart comparing it, we had virtually no growth last year, so up isn't, you know, that substantial. Personal property growth this year is, is level, no big new things coming in, kind of, an even swap out this year. This chart is kind of showing you what the new growth trend has been over four years. You can see the residential number, it goes up and down a little bit, but it's fairly stable. Your personal property, once again, it goes up and down a little, it's fairly stable. Where you're gonna see a little bit more volatility is if you look at your commercial. In two thousand and twelve, it was lower, two thousand and thirteen up, two thousand and fourteen was a really good year, we had a lot of large properties coming online, and then now for this year, we've started to go down a little bit. The industrial growth, you can see, we had, two thousand and twelve was a decent year, two thousand and thirteen, we had more. Last year, there was literally only one thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars in new growth, do, taxable dollars for industrial properties. This year, we have a little bit more, but still not that substantial. Some of the new growth changes that, that have been affecting this chart, we have Lundgren Honda, we have Diamond Chevrolet, Fuller Automotive, Herb Chambers, so these are all things that you're seeing that have come online in the past few years. This is just showing you what the tax levy increase due to new growth was. We had the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Of that, personal property represented the largest share at about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Residential growth was next at about a hundred and seventy-six, followed by commercial, and then industrial last. This chart is showing you what the change in the values this year due to revaluation was. You can see for single-family houses, single-family houses are actually up, well, they're up approximately three point five percent this year. So we have seen some growth in that, and keep in mind, this is based on sales from fiscal, from calendar year two thousand and thirteen. We've seen some positive growth this year in our condominiums. Last year, we actually had a decline. This year, we're seeing those values are starting to come up. We've had, in our two and three families, we've had more, it's, the values have increased due to revaluation a little bit this year. Apartments four and up had a large increase last year, those have labeled, leveled off, and they're fairly stable. This chart is basically showing you equalizing the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen rate, comparing if we had the same property last year, the same property this year, to get to the same tax bill amount where the value would have to be to equalize. And you can see, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar property in two thousand and fourteen, your tax bill would be three thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. To get to that tax bill with the increase in the value of the houses this year, your tax rate would have to go from seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents down to sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents to keep the bill level for that property. The overall residential value change for our properties due to revaluation for single-family, multifamily condos and land was a positive three point three seven percent. And obviously, within the class, they've changed at different rates. This is, I'm sorry, the slide is out of order, but this is back on the small commercial exemption. This is just showing you on the small commercial exemption, if we went with the traditional shift that we have done, what the, the various difference in the tax rate is. The small commercial exemption is gonna split the value, the, the tax rate between commercial industrial properties and personal property. And basically, the new commercial rate will be between nine and ten cents different than what the personal property rate is. This, once again, is bringing you through a few different scenarios of properties, and it's comparing, if you have a property that is worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if they qualify for the exemption, their tax bill would be at five thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars. If they do not qualify for the exemption, their value, their taxes are going to be at five thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars. So they're getting a substantial discount. If we did not have the small commercial exemption, the bill for that property would be five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. So on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property, the, the basic difference in the tax bill is about thirty dollars to offer this exemption to the qualifying properties. With these numbers, I'm assuming the ten percent shift for commercial that we have done in the past, and it assumes that we are gonna use the current rate of one point two two percent as the classification. This is getting into what the projected rate chart would look like for this year, and it's bringing you through the various tax rate for the various scenarios. We are currently at one point two two percent, and I am gonna make an assumption that we're going to do the ten percent small business exemption. So when I put the tax rates down there, you'll see there is a difference between your personal property rate and your commercial industrial tax rate. Add the factor that we're at the one point two two, which is where we're at now, that would give us a residential tax rate this year of seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents, and a commercial tax rate of twenty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. This is giving you what the historic trends of this split are. So you can see, in two thousand and seven, we were at a one point five eight percent, and over the past few years, that rate has crept down. Two thousand and fourteen, we went to one point two two percent. So we've come down about thirty-six on. So, we've come down about 36 on that split. The next chart, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but it's there just to kind of give you an idea of the effect of the tax rates on commercial industrial assessments. It's kind of like a mini appraisal-type thing. And basically, what it's showing you is the same size building, the same rent, bringing you through the four different scenarios, one in Shrewsbury, one in Grafton, one in the city of Worcester, and one in the town of Auburn. And what it's doing is it's showing you what the effect of the tax factor is on the actual value of the building. You can see Shrewsbury with its low tax rate, the same building that is, would be worth $287, $325 in Auburn, is worth $329, $362 in the town of Shrewsbury. So, you can see, as that factor and that tax rate goes up and down, it's actually having an effect on your property. So, as you change the split, any changes that you make in that split, you have to keep in mind, the next year are going to affect the tax factor and start to bring your commercial industrial properties down. This is just a chart, it's showing you the cost to do business in Worcester County, and we go through the abutting towns, Grafton, Milbury, Oxford, Lester, Storbridge, Shrewsbury, Worcester, and Auburn. And the one thing that stands out on the chart right now is you definitely don't want to be in Worcester. Auburn is much better off there. Storbridge is the third of the highest, and then the other ones, as you can see, are significantly This is bringing you through a chart showing you the impact on the actual tax bills for splitting the tax rate on various properties. For the purpose of the exercise, I used going to a single rate, taxes at 1.15, 1.20, taxes at the 1.22, which is where we are right now, and then I bumped up to 1.25, which is where we were two years ago. The various rates are listed there for residential, commercial, industrial, personal property, and what I did is I took the average values for residential properties, commercial properties, industrial properties, and the average personal property account. And just, as I say, it's just giving you a point of comparison for the various ones and what the rates would be. This chart is actually going to show you, it's based on our current factor, which is 1.22. If you change the rate to 1, the average residential property, which is at 227,980, the effect on that of changing it to 1, the taxes would go up about $394 on that property. If you went to a factor of 1.25, which is above where we are, the savings to that property would be $53. When you look down to the commercial, changing the rate to 1, they have a significant gain. They would save an additional $4,638 by going to 1, but the $53 on the residential house would actually turn into $630,000 for that same commercial property that they would pay in addition this year. And on the industrial properties, it's slightly higher. This is, you're not going to be able to read it up here, you do have copies of the chart up there. This is basically the one which will actually compare 2014 to 2015, what the rate would be if you went through what the change in the various tax bills would be. It gives you a good rule of thumb. We have the current rate that we're at at the top, and then we've gone through the various scenarios of a rate of 1, a rate of 1.10, 1.15, 1.20, and 1.25. I do have charts further on that bring the tax rate up, but just for the sake of size, that was pretty much all I could fit. This has been updated for this year. This is just giving you an idea what the average residential bill in Auburn is compared to the state average, and you can see, we're pretty much maintaining the same distance between the state average. We're still significantly lower, we're almost $1,100 lower in Auburn than the state average is, and as the state's gone up, Auburn has kind of weaved a little, but it pretty much And this is just giving you an idea what the median home prices are. You can see how we peaked back in 2007, 2008, then you had the decline, and now you can see that the past couple of years, we're showing a slight upward trend. This, once again, is based on home sales that happened during calendar year 2013. That's what we statutorily have to look for in the town of Auburn. This is showing you the change in the amount of foreclosure sales. This is through October for this year, but what you're going to see here is that there has been a decline in the active foreclosures. That doesn't mean that we're not having foreclosure resales. There's still a significant amount of properties out there that are reselling, but the actual foreclosures, the actual houses that are being taken by the banks, has started to go down. And this is just a sample of the form that we fill out tonight as you take your votes. Basically, as you go through, you'll see the various, the selected residential factor, the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption. The numbers that I've used in there are based on last year's figures to kind of give you an idea what that commercial exemption would be, but, you know, once again, it takes me about two weeks to get to that final number before I resubmit the form to you to sign. The most important part on here that you would have to be notified of after-town meeting, if there are any changes in this number, this number would come back to you to verify, but the excess levy capacity with the budget, the way that we're showing it right now, is about $3,350,403.52. And as I say, if there's any changes to that number, that would come to you at your next meeting, and we would, once again, have to ratify that number. This is just a slide that Ed had presented at town meeting, and basically, what it's showing you is a five-year history of if we used Proposition 2 and 1/2 and had levy to the max, and what it would cost the taxpayers if we did this. For fiscal year 2015, you can see the number at the $3,350,404, and levying to the max would be an additional $1.62 on the residential rate and $2.18 on the commercial rate. This chart here, this is the wrong version of it, so I'm kind of not going to use it. This was just to give you an idea what the difference in value would be if you levied all of your excess capacity and what the increase to the tax bills would be. And the final pages in here, this is your what-if worksheet. I've given you numbers to go by. You do not have to use those numbers, you can go anywhere in between these breaks, and this is telling you where you are at the different factors. It does give you the various rates that you would go through, should you vote to spend money out of certain types of funds, that would change, but we're not concerned with the tax rate. What we're concerned with at this meeting is the factor. That's basically what we vote. I would certainly come back to talk to you about the effects of any votes that are done at town meeting on the tax rate, so that you know what those rates would be, but what we're dealing with tonight is simply the factor that we're going to use in between the properties. I can tell you that whatever monies you vote to expend, that money, the burden of that is shared by both the residential properties. You're buying residential land, but the residential and the commercial taxpayers both have a stake in this, they will both pay. With the current split, the residential people will pay less per dollar than the commercial will, but everybody does share in that. And the chart goes all the way up to 135, so it goes up to where we were about three or four years ago. That's the end.
Thank you. Do board members have questions for Ms. Cosgrove before I open it up to public comment? I have one, just for clarification. There's been some discussion about leaving the hearing open until after-town meeting. If we take, close the hearing tonight and take a vote, can town meetings still consider excess levy?
Yes, yes. The only thing that is off the table is if we actually had finalized the recap and sent it to the Department of Revenue. If you wish to change the split, change the commercial exemption, that would require a hearing, but the changes in the tax rate due to any changes you vote at town meeting and the changes to excess levy capacity can be done without a new hearing. Basically, I need to inform you of them, but you don't need to hold a new hearing or even hold this one open for that. That's a matter of choice.
Great, thank you. And you're welcome to come up and sit with us. I'm going to open it up to public comment at this point. Mr. Sakashian in the back?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Mark Sakashian Jr. I'm speaking here today on behalf of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, as well as President of Capital Signing Company in Auburn Realty. Over the past nine years, the Board of Selectmen have taken the steps to reduce the business tax rate from the 2,000 differential rate of 1.62 to the present rate of 1.22. Collectively, our goal should be to get Auburn back to a single tax rate sooner than later. With the exception of Worcester, Auburn employs the largest number of people in Massachusetts, central Massachusetts. Auburn now has a more positive business image, and we cannot let that slip back like it was in the past. We all know this is a tough year because of the middle school override and the possible purchase of the land on Southhold Street, but the businesses didn't vote for the school, and they didn't, they don't vote for the land purchase. The towns and citizens have. We have experienced some new economic growth and expansion due directly to the rate decrease. The Auburn Mall is just about at 100% capacity, which it hasn't been in years. The eyesore of the old Abdows Building is gone, and the beautiful new building that Outback has put up is up and running. The Ethan Allen Building is now a fitness center with more retail space to open soon. We have the Connecticut Business System, the RH White Expansion, the Diamond Auto Group, X Golf, and the list goes on and on. Storbridge, two weeks ago, just voted to go back to a single tax rate. Our bond rate is the lowest it's been, and it reflects the right mix of businesses and commercial use. That is why we need to continue towards a single tax rate in Auburn. We are the only town in the immediate area besides Worcester that has a split rate. We have made tremendous progress bringing businesses back to Auburn, but we are still not there yet. I am asking the Board of Selectmen not only to keep the small business tax exemption, but to also lower the tax rate on businesses from 1.22 to 1.17, 5.5 points. We need to be at a single tax rate. We have been working on this for eight years, and it's long overdue. We are now seeing the benefits of everyone's hard work. We know it's not an easy decision to make, but it's the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to speak next? That's okay.
My name is Gaius Powell. We own Crystal Caves in Auburn. I'd like to second everything Mr. Sakashian has said. Just ask if I can get a little bit of clarification on the vote on the small commercial exemption, in that the value must be less than a million dollars. Is that the value of the real estate or the business?
Ms. Cosgrove. Yeah, go ahead.
The value of the real estate.
Real estate, okay. And must have less than 10 employees. Is that equivalent, full-time employees or equivalent?
Yes.
So, I could have 40 people there and be just 10?
Working quarter-time and still qualified.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Amar Kapoor. I'm president of Aimtech, and we have three operations in Auburn. And last year, I was here, and I said, "I'll keep coming back till you folks, you know, do what Mark Sakashian echoed it, like a single tax rate." And I just want to bring out one important point, you know. Now, 5% of our business comes from Massachusetts, and 35% of our business comes from export to basically countries like Europe, Mexico, and Canada. And the balance of it is spread of our business between West Virginia, Texas, California, Connecticut, and Florida. And we are, you know, because what you folks have done in the past, going in the right direction, that made us think that we should expand here, even though we have options of being in Texas or Florida. We have been asked by governors to expand over there, and we are on an expansion mode. You know, we have already expanded our business here in Auburn from last year. We hired people here, and even though the economy was soft, but we were able to increase our business because of exports. So, my, one of the things that comes to my mind is that the existing business carry more than 36% of the total tax burden in Auburn, and even though the valuation of commercial industrial is 29.8%, right there, you have a difference of at least pretty close to 7%, I mean, it's 6%. So, moving in the right direction is certainly a right way, gives a good signal to folks in business around, you know. Now, people are talking about Worcester, talking about Auburn. When we go expand and like, we display trade shows like in Singapore and all that, it's as, "Where is Auburn? Where is Worcester?" You know, they have not heard of it. So, like, we are kind of ambassadors also, and I think it's the right thing to do, is send a right signal, and hopefully, I'm just hopeful that maybe something will touch a major, major corporation, and they will start thinking about like a Fortune 500 company to come here, because we service folks like United Technology, which is Pratt &amp; Whitney Division, and Honeywell, you know, the big companies, Snecma, GE. So, you know, they ask questions, you know, we get these questions, "How's the business climate? How do people think in terms of Auburn? How do they treat you?" You know, those questions. And all I've been giving is, and plus our folks giving positive response, you know. I hate to see, to take that option of Texas or Florida for expansion, you know. So, I like to, you know, urge that the board consider seriously, you know, and, you know, bring down the tax rate to a single tax rate, which is what Mark Sakashian and we have been talking, and the board has been, you folks have been listening to us, you know, but I hope you don't just stop, you know, and I'll keep coming back until the tax rate comes to a single rate, you know. You know, I don't want to be sounded like a broken record, you know, but just want to make sure that you folks understand, you know, there is a big implication you know, there is a big implication. All of a sudden, something happens and I like to see something very good happen for Auburn. You know, we talk about modern rocketry, you know, rocket science. Goddard was here, you know, he said, I show them the pictures of, you know, the rocket in our Auburn facility here. I think, you know, folks, when they, when you talk to presidents and vice presidents of companies, you know, then they tell their commercial people, you know, can you, there's another option, you know, in the Northeast. So that's why I just want to echo that sentiment. And please, consider, you folks have been favorable and just don't move the clock back. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to speak? Mr. Reisner?
Hello, my name is Marty Reisner. I'm here from the Auburn Industrial Development Corporation. Most of you probably know who I am. If you don't, we own and manage approximately half a million square feet of office, warehouse, and industrial properties, warehouse distribution facilities in the Auburn Industrial Park as well as on Milbury Street in Auburn. And we've always had a great rapport with the town of Auburn. Cindy has always worked with us to help us when we've endured vacancies, which we've had in the past several years. But she pointed out earlier that industrial is up and I can attest to it because industrial is coming back to Auburn. We're filling up our industrial park nicely. We're maintaining the tenants we have. We've invested hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars into the infrastructure and cosmetic appearance of our buildings to attract first-rate tenants, long-term leases. So we'd like to really move forward with the momentum created by lowering that tax rate. It is a disadvantage to landlords like myself when surrounding communities can offer a single tax rate, a lower tax rate. So to keep the momentum rolling is going to keep the growth going as far as commercial is concerned, in my opinion, for office and for retail development projects, which is what we're striving for in the town of Auburn. We've already done a lot of industrial, so we want to go commercial. We want to attract those big national tenants, first-rate AAA tenants. And by keeping that growth going towards a single tax rate, it's going to mean a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Mr. Wade?
My name is Michael Wade. I own a few commercial properties in Auburn and I have a new building that will be going online, hopefully in the next month or two and that. And I look at it as a plus. I've seen this board, what were the tax rates between the commercial properties and that? And yeah, I would love to see a single rate. I know you can't do it overnight and it does take time. It's been very positive with what you've been done in the past. The other thing I see is, and I mentioned it last year, is there's been quite a few new buildings that are going online. Last year and the year before, you never had those tax dollars. Now, you've got the new buildings going online, so you do have the tax dollars. You have mine going online shortly, which will have more tax dollars from the vacant land, which it was. Also, it has dressed up that area of Route 20 immensely from when I took it over. But, so I look at this and maybe some of that money of these new buildings can help make a bigger split where the residential properties don't have to pick that up. Because that's, people are investing in the town of Auburn because of the tax rate. I think you've seen an influx in that where people are doing it. So if you take some of that money, so you can lower the commercial rate without jeopardizing the residential rate. Maybe if we can get it lower, you'll be attracting more businesses in and then that will help you get to the single rate which, you know, everybody's looking for. So it will be more viable. The other thing is, is I own property in Auburn, but I don't live in Auburn, so I can't vote in Auburn. But in other words, and I don't have any children going to school using any of the services like most commercial properties do. So in other words, we have a lot less burden on the town, but we seem to be paying a lot of the expenses of the town. So I think if they looked at the new properties coming online and budget a certain amount of that, you know, lower the rate, I think that would be, you know, help the problem of trying to get to that single, you know, tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Page?
Good evening, Wayne Page, 900 Common Road. I actually wasn't going to get up tonight and speak on this tax classification hearing because I see a problem all the way around. But after I hear after business, after business, after business, I think I had to get up and speak for our residents of the town of Auburn. I think the tax rate where it's going, where the residential's in past years lately, their tax rate are going up. The businesses get their tax break every year. We live in a town of Auburn. We deal with the businesses and yes, I agree that we need the businesses, but you don't have to do it on the backs of our people. We need to work together, but in the last, I don't know, five, six, seven years, the tax rate has gone up more for residents than it has for businesses. Businesses have write-offs. Businesses have everything they can do to get their tax rate cut down. Our residents have to worry about food on their table. They have to worry about medicine in their cabinets. And we have to worry about our seniors. And I don't want to see our residents be driven out of our town. We live here. The residents live here. The seniors live here. As Mr. Wade just said, he doesn't even live in this town. He's more worried about him and taxes than he even cares about this town of Auburn.
We don't want to make it personal.
And I am, that's fine, I'll leave it there.
We're not going to make it personal.
I'm not making it personal, but that's what he said. I'm just elaborating on what he said. But I agree, everybody has a problem, but the tax rate for the residents keep going up. What I would like to ask either Julia or Ed or whoever can answer this question is when you go to your single tax classification, which the businesses want, does that mean when you get to that point, the residents' taxes are going to drop? Or they're going to keep continuing going up after and more and more and more? When are the residents going to see their taxes go down? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reistoff.
I'm John Reistoff, 18 Saber Way. There's a wonderful website, Mass Department of Revenue website. I kind of got turned on to it last February after presentation here. So I went on that website and I looked around a little bit and I compared some numbers. Now, I went back a little farther. I went back to 2005. And I got a question. Let me make sure I have this right. In 2005, the commercial industrial rate in Auburn was 2162. 2013, but I think it's similar in '14, I didn't update the number, was 2338. That's an increase of 1%. Does that sound right?
I don't have the number.
Okay, now the single family, the single-family home value in Auburn in 2005, average ham, average single-family home value was $217,000. In 2013, it was $218,000. So residential housing values are pretty much the same. How about industrial values? Have they changed very much?
Without looking at the chart, I don't know.
Okay, let's assume that they're the same, that they haven't changed very much. Okay, that means your tax bill, if you're a business owner in Auburn, has gone up 1%, correct? Average. No? Okay, well, I'll tell you what it's gone up if you're a homeowner. Average homeowner with a $217,000 house is paying 48% more in property taxes today than they did in 2005. Okay? My home has gone up 66%. My bill in 2005 was $5,400. It's over $9,000 today. I think you need to leave things alone. I think you need to stop taxing the residents. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Mr. Forten and then after Mr. Forten.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Cindy, I know, I know that you don't want to be rude and not address the folks, but when you're not speaking into the microphone, I can't hear everything you're saying and I'm assuming most of the people at home probably can't hear it either. So I know you're trying to address them and not be rude, but.
Good evening, Brian LaFort, representing Polar Beverages. We have two locations, one at 26 Southbridge Street in Auburn and also at 28 Sword Street. The business owners who have been at the podium have given you all the reasons that moving to the single tax rate is the right thing to do. And I could repeat everything that they said. Each one of them made some very, very valid points. That the single rate is helping the town of Auburn. The commercial and industrial tax base has improved and I think by moving towards the single rate, that trend will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonte?
Hi, I'm Jeff Labonte, 336 South Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, 01501. I am a member of Chamber of Commerce, have been since 2000-ish, something like that. It was curious that one of the previous speakers mentioned the residential tax rate increase because I looked at the same thing. And my house has increased 44% the tax bill since 2008. It was $4,990 this year. It's just about $7,200. That's a pretty big increase. I've heard a lot of anecdotal evidence tonight, a lot of talking. And I agree, I think the split tax rate was a horrible, horrible idea. It's not your fault. Because I know, Ms. Moni and I, we were what, like six when that happened, right? 1986, was that about when they did the split tax rate?
I think 1983.
83, okay, so bad idea. But here we are. I agree we need to end up at a single tax rate eventually. There are a couple of things that have been overlooked in all of the Chamber of Commerce, I won't call it propaganda, the Chamber of Commerce publications and the comments tonight. One, there are a significant number of Auburn Chamber members who are home-based businesses. So every time you ding that commercial tax rate, residential tax rate, you're dinging home-based businesses. You're hurting your constituency. It's not a benefit to me or to any of the other home-based businesses. As far as research, I've been a management consultant since 1996. I research, it's what I do, it's what I've always done. So I did some research. I went to find real hard data on what commercial property tax rates do to businesses. This is a late night and I appreciate everybody's, I'm going to fast forward and I'm not going to bore you. There was a study, a very interesting article done by a gentleman by the name of Richard Dye at the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy. They did a widespread survey of Cook County. You've heard of it, Chicago area, Illinois, split tax rate, big issue with business growth. Their conclusion, "We find clear evidence that property tax classification raises business property tax rates." Duh, wish they'd pay me to come up with that stuff. However, "We find no relationship between property tax rates and the growth in the market value of commercial or industrial property or the growth in the number of business establishments." Now, how can that be? Because we've all witnessed growth with our own eyes since 2008. In 2008, we were in the throes of the worst recession in 70 or 80 years in this country. The factors that are most important to business growth, according to academic research now, this is normalizing for all these other factors in the business environment. But I'm on the wrong page, so I can't even find it. The business factors were the general economic climate was the single most important factor, not property tax rates. Another gentleman, and I promise you I will wrap this up quickly, but this is, this one is interesting too. Another gentleman did a survey of 26 academic papers, and I can't find again where I am in my notes. He looked at 26 different research papers measuring whether taxes were a positive or negative influence on businesses. Taxes had a strong negative correlation with business growth. However, the type of tax, commercial income tax rates were the number one problem. Personal income tax rates were the number two problem. Personal property tax rates were number three. Commercial property tax rates, real estate tax rates, were a distant, distant fourth. And my point in sharing all of this is, you know, when your mom told you to wear a hat because all the head, the heat goes out your head and you dive and then wear a hat? And you come to find out now, that's just not true. We heard it for so long and we said it for so long. You know, sometimes we just fall into these traps. And I think another factor is that the property tax rate is an easy target at the local level. There's not much else we can manipulate. We can't change federal tax rates. So it feels like something we can, we can manage and we can control. But the impact of it is questionable at best. I will leave with one other topic. This is interesting because Ms. Cosgrove brought this up in her presentation, this trickle-down effect of taxing, cutting tax rates to the property owners, which may not be the actual business, and hoping that that trickles down to the business. My anecdotal evidence, and I spoke with 14 business owners and general managers in town. And this is over the course of the past year. And what they told me to summarize is that it ain't that big a deal, but don't tell them that, quote, unquote. I think if you brought 100 people in a room and asked them if you want their taxes to go up and down, I'm pretty sure I know what the outcome would be. They're going to say we want it to go down. So we get that off the table. If you look at the assessors list of the top 38, the 38 most valuable properties in town, I used 38 because eight of those are government properties, so I wiped those out. The top 30 industrial, commercial properties in town. Anybody want to venture a guess at how many of those are actually Auburn-owned properties? Five, five. They're owned outside of the town. In fact, many of them are owned outside the state. The Auburn Mall is a white elephant in the room, right? They're going to run away. $55 million property based out of Indianapolis, Indiana. I'm sure Simon malls appreciates the 60 grand a year we're going to cut their tax, but they're a $6 billion corporation with $1.6 billion in profit. So I want to put that in perspective. Again, I do think the single tax rate is the way to go. I would encourage a slower rate at this point because the rate of tax increase to the residents has been fairly rapid in the past six years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Mr. Tatro?
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Robert Tatro, 4 Ridgewood Drive, last name spelled T-A-T-R-O. And I knew I should have went before Jeff because it's a very difficult act to follow, no question. But I do echo most of the things that Jeff said. One of the things I'd like to point out to you is that a few years back, I looked into it and I think it was 20% of the residential homes in Auburn were owned by people 65 years of age or older. So that means their 401Ks, if they have one, or the retirements or the social security are not going to increase. If you're going to go up about $360 some odd dollars, I believe the estimate was somewhere around there, that's asking them to surrender a social security check or a retirement check. They're talking about a 30% increase in electric bills this year. Over the next maybe month or so, that's going to probably stay there. You're asking them to take more money out of their pocket. So with that being said, I think with the school coming online, the possibility of purchasing this land, other issues that are surrounding the town, we've demonstrated also through our commitment as a community to encourage businesses to come in through our interpretation of the ZBA laws, through your commitment on the boards, other members of the boards, Conservation Commission, Planning Board. We are committed to the business community, I believe that. They also forget to mention that Prime Motor Group just bought Langway Ford. Herb Chambers has built a substantial amount of property down on Route 20. So as Jeff said, they're not really going away. But for me to have to work an extra four or five days, five days out of the year just to pay the increase in my taxes, I think that's asking a lot for the 16,000 some odd residents and what is it, about 8,000 homeowners? Is that what it is about, ish?
Um, I'm just, there's only 7,000 persons.
Okay, so 7,000, okay.
So it's significantly lower.
We can't hear you, Cindy.
There's less than 7,000 parcels in town, so it's significantly lower. I think it's around 4,000 residential.
Okay. So you're asking the 4,000 people that own residential property in town to reach into their pocket and to basically hand that money to them. So I think, that being said, I am in favor of eventually working our way to an easier tax rate for the business community. I just don't think this is the year to do it with all the other commitments we have on the board. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Proudy.
Since I'm probably the oldest person in the room next to my husband. Because I am younger. I'd like, sorry, I'm Beth Proudy, Precinct 1, P-R-O-U-T-Y. I'd like to say that it is hard for seniors. I mean, there are things, seniors have priorities, certainly Ron and I have priorities. There are things we're willing to give up a dinner out for, and there are things we're not. But with the winter coming, and if any of you heat with oil, I don't know how the average senior in Auburn does it. And I'd like, I know that Mrs. Brotherton, when she ran, said she wanted to help the seniors. She would do anything she could to help the seniors. Well, I'm telling you, keeping that rate what it is, the classification, will help the seniors. Spreading it will hurt the seniors, and most of them will hurt more than it will me. But I do feel an obligation to speak in part of the seniors of Auburn.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? No one. Thank you all for speaking. Do board members have any comments, questions? Seeing none, we have options here. We can close the hearing and take our votes. As you heard, Ms. Cosgrove, if we close the hearing tonight, there's not an issue with town meeting addressing any financial plans for the purchase of the land. So having said that, first I'll entertain a motion whether we're going to close the hearing or continue the hearing. We have to close the hearing first. Mr. Holstrom.
Before we get into it, I'm relatively new to the board, and this will be my third-class tax classification hearing. And I know that the town, its history has always helped out the businesses. We have a lot of stuff coming on board, and I know with the town administration, they've done an excellent job, working with all the businesses in town, keeping the activity going, the networking going. We have a lot of stuff going on in town, and I think it's about time that we start taking a look at the residents, see what is going on for them, and try to help them out for one year. I'm not in favor of dropping back to anything but maintaining the 1.22 that we had from last year to help the residents out, give them a break this time, see where the dust settles, and see how we do with middle school coming up, the possibility of the South Hall Roadland coming up, and whatever other projects may be coming up that we are unaware of right now, but I'd like to, my feeling is I'd like to be able to help out the residents and stay at 1.22, and that would be the motion that I would make.
Okay, so we would need to close the hearing first if we're going to make a motion.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? So the first vote that we would need to take is the selection of the residential factor. So I'll entertain a motion to set the residential factor at, Mr. Holstrom?
1.22.
Second.
Is there discussion? Mr. Simoni.
I know the presentation is down, but if we went from 122 to 120, I think when we talked, we were talking about roughly $36.
So.
Okay. Well, actually, the slide before that, I think, better illustrated the question.
Okay.
We're currently at 122, under residential.
Yes.
The difference is 3,935 to 3,971, which is basically $36 per.
Yes.
Correct. So I just want to make sure that we're talking about $9 per quarter roughly over the next year?
Yes. The only thing that I would caution you is this is not taking into effect the changes due to revaluation.
Right.
Because this year, we have had an increase in the value of the single-family home, and that is going to be reflected in their tax bills this year. Last year, commercial industrial properties went up due to, the commercial ones went up due to the same change. This year, it's the residential's.
Understood. All right. Thanks. I just, this is four, I think, four or five now for me, four? And we sit up here and we take the whole town into account when we go through this. And I understand, you know, we have a lot of things that are going on, the purchase of the land, the middle school, all of those things. I do believe that overall, eventually getting to the single tax rate certainly will help us. I mean, you know, if we fill all those remaining empty businesses, build new, obviously that helps us. At the same time, you know, I look at, take myself for example, I think I read on the state's website, it roughly costs somewhere between $12,000 and $13,000 to educate a child. So that's about $36,000 worth of services right there, and I can tell you, I don't pay $36,000, thank God. But, you know, so it's a balance. And whenever I come to this hearing, I take all of those factors into account, and I try to do right by the entire town. I understand there's business owners that don't live in town, so be it, but they're, to a degree, they're still citizens of the community. They do a lot of things. They sponsor our sport teams. They contribute money to scholarships that Auburn students take advantage of, and those are all great things. So I just want, I just want you to understand that whenever I consider this, and I don't just consider it on this night, it's a couple of months leading up to this, that it's all of those factors. And the four times that I've voted to change the tax classification towards a single tax rate has affected me and my family as well. So, you know, let's not lose sight of that, too. I understand exactly what those of you who spoke are experiencing, so, you know, I just want to put that out there. My last comment is I'm shocked because I find it hard to believe that the folks in Singapore have not heard of Auburn. That is. Thank you.
So Cindy, I have a follow-up on Mr. Simoni's comment. He referenced the 1.20 and the difference, and I'm looking at this sheet here. And on this sheet here, at a rate of 1.20, I'm seeing an increase of 182 for residential. And at the 122, I'm seeing an increase of 145. And I think he referenced the number of 34?
Yes.
Can you?
Yes.
Explain the distinction, please.
Basically, that's why this chart here is my favorite. Because the chart that I have up there that you see with that number, that only takes into account the changes in the rate. That's telling you that if you do this, this is what the result of just that action are. But this other sheet is tying it all together. This sheet is telling you, this is what they paid last year, this is what they pay this year. The changes that this is showing you are due not only to the shift in the factor, but changes within the various classes for the purpose of classification, revaluation, and all the other factors that are involved. So, yes, that's absolutely correct. If you change by one point or two point, those numbers are going to be reflective of that change, but the other factors come into play on this, on the sheet that you're referencing, and that tells you the whole picture. So, yes, those people will see the $36 or $38, but due to revaluation, that's actually going to be more like 182.
Eighty-two?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's more than what, because of the other factors involved, it's more than where you would have supposed.
Okay. So it would be basically a $45 increase per quarter? And if we were to support the 1.22, am I correct that the industrial rate would go up slightly, but the commercial rate would come down? Even if it's minimal, it would come down a percentage point?
Yes.
Even keeping it the same?
Yes. They would see, most of them would see some savings, and that's a direct result of the fact that they went up substantially last year. They had about a 5% increase. So this year, they have kind of leveled off, so they kind of bit the bullet last year.
Okay. Thank you.
So essentially, and I went to this chart because the other one is hard to see and would be, but, so if I understand this in the conversation that we had, there's going to be a change to the residential regardless because of devaluation. So there will be an increase, because I don't want anyone to leave here if this board votes to stay at 122. I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that, you know, there's still a change to there.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
They're normal fluctuations, and you're going to see them.
Absolutely. Understood. I just don't know if, you know, I mean, I have, I have the ability every year, as I have, to sit with you and Ed and go over this, and these folks don't, so, you know, just for the benefit of the understanding. Thank you.
So the motion is for the 1.22? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Simoni. Now, the open space discount. We would, I would entertain a motion to adopt or not adopt the ocean, oh, excuse me, open space discount. And as you said, this would commonly refer to as what we call vacation homes, where the, I'm sorry, no, I meant open space, cancel that. Open space, does the board wish to adopt or not adopt the open space discount?
Just to clarify, we don't have any land currently classified as open space. When I came here, we had some that was, and basically what was happening is there were houses being built on it. So not really open space.
Okay.
So we would have to go through a process and actually change classification on properties. We'd need to do this like the summer before.
Okay.
So we've typically not even.
So we don't adopt the open space as a rule?
Yeah.
Make a motion not to accept.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Regarding the residential exemption, if you can just briefly.
The residential exemption is the one that you were referring to. It's primarily used in communities with vacation homes and part-time residents, and it would shift the value from the lower-value homes onto the high-priced homes, and particularly onto non-resident properties.
Motion not to use the residential exemption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And the small commercial discount, I'd entertain a motion to extend the small commercial discount. Right now, it's at 10%?
Motion to extend the small commercial exemption.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you all who spoke tonight and waited. And thank you, Cindy, for the presentation. So I know we have someone waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. and Mrs. Proudy, happy anniversary, because it looks like you're leaving, so.
You may be. We have the, Mr. Cappan, do you know how long, do you have any idea how long the results survey presentation will be?
I don't, but Eric is here. We could ask Eric.
Oh, there you are. Do you have an estimate?
Say.
Okay. And are you here for Santora Automotive? Santora Automotive should take about two minutes. It's up to the board. Is there a motion?
Make a motion. We move up for B. Santora Automotive.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that one should have been 4D.
4D, I'm sorry. That's right. That's a typo.
Just wanted to make you.
Okay. All those in favor of moving it up?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? So, once she moves, you can, Santora, you can come up to the microphone, please.
Make a motion. We open the hearing?
Second.
It's not a, it's a continued hearing. Okay.
Yes.
Reopen the hearing?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Good evening, and thank you for waiting. If you can just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you are doing.
My name's Jonathan Santora, and I'm looking to take over 603 Southbridge Street.
You can move that up a little if you need to.
Continue operating it as a automotive repair facility.
Okay. And you've met with the DCG, and you're aware of the recommended conditions that they've recommended placing on your license?
Yes.
Okay. Do members have any questions or comments? So I'll just read the conditions in for the record. There shall be no vehicle repair performed outside of the building. If the building is equipped with a floor drain, it must meet plumbing code and DEP requirements. There shall be no paint or bodywork performed on the property or within the building without first obtaining all necessary DEP and EPA permits. The applicant shall ensure that all necessary fire department permits are in order. All vehicles must be parked on paved surfaces. This shall include customers and employees. And all parking shall be per, excuse me, the approved site plan. Do you have any questions regarding those conditions? Do members have any comments or questions?
No.
And the hours on here? Mrs. Brotherton.
Yes. I'm sorry, is your name Mr. Santora?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Was there, are you the only person, sir? I mean, are there any other co-partnerships or anyone?
Just myself and my wife.
Just yourself and your wife? Will she have any working capacity with the business?
Not very much, no. Well, keeping at home, that's about it.
Okay. I would just ask, in the future, the front page is pretty blank, so it's very hard to determine like what, so basically, instead of having, you're the president?
Yes.
You're the secretary?
Yes.
And you're the treasurer?
And if I can say?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs.
What are the hours of operation?
Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and Saturdays by appointment.
And what would those hours be by appointment? You know, from?
From 8 to 5.
Eight, 8 to 5, okay. So, it would basically be an 8 to 5, six-day-a-week operation?
Yes.
And you may or may not be there on Saturday from 8 to 5?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Motion to close the hearing.
I'm sorry, are there any butters here?
Oh, sorry.
There are no butters. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? I will entertain a motion regarding the application.
Motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated applying. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thanks so much. It's our policy that you need to come in before the board, so thanks for waiting and good luck. Next, we have economics. Do you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine. I was going to invite you up to the table, but if you have a PowerPoint presentation, then you'll have to do it from there.
Well, the computer was shut down after the last presentation.
Okay, take your time. Let me just check, this one, I'm kind of going through each one.
While they're setting up, can we move up item 6C?
Gift acceptance?
Gift acceptance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Let me find, the gift acceptance. Thank you. And to, from Betty Gaines, the amount of $10 to the Auburn Animal Shelter in many, memory of Matt Jacobson.
Motion accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? To the Fire Department and its anonymous donation to the gift, um, gift account in the amount of $25.
Motion accept with gratitude.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We don't have it on here, but we do have proclamations, so we would be covered. I'd entertain a motion to approve and prepare a proclamation for Mr. Canethia, who is receiving the Riley Award. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Sharon, that was a motion for Ken. Yes, thank you. Okay. And we have the minutes from May 27, 2014, and the minutes from, excuse me, June 6, 2014. Are there any corrections or omissions? Hearing, and the chair will accept them as written. Did you have any town manager items?
No.
Okay. And you're ready to go?
We're just about right here.
We have no tabled items? Did we have any member items, or has been none submitted? Okay, we're going to move on to the presentation. We have executive session.
I'm sorry. I need one more moment.
No worries.
Okay.
And Eric, if you wouldn't mind, just so everyone, in cases, anyone watching who doesn't know who you are, introduce yourself and tell them what you do here in Auburn.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, Select Board Members, Administration, and residents present. My name is Eric Lesbrance. I am the acting town planner, and I worked with the Economic Development Committee to do a small business survey. As we know, the town has an economic development committee, and is charged with advising the town manager on matters regarding the business community here in Auburn. This includes the retention of existing businesses and strategies to attract businesses to move here in the town. The committee felt that it was important to hear from the town's solid and varied commercial base regarding some things that could be potentially important in attracting and retaining businesses. So, over the summer, the committee worked on compiling a survey. It started with a list of businesses from the assessor, and upon filing that list down, the committee thought it appropriate to approach 546 smaller businesses. These are businesses that are low, have, have a, more of like a locally controlled and owned sort of situation. So, it, we felt like it would be a valuable input from, from these smaller businesses. And, and the committee didn't feel it was practical to make walk-in visits during business hours, so they decided to do the survey. We sent out the surveys in a letter with a two-sided survey, and that was in August. We received 73 responses, so it's about 13 and 1/2% response from our surveyors. This is just a quick image of what the survey looked like, so you could kind of have a feel of, of what the businesses received. That's front and back. And I believe you received a packet with the questions that we asked and, as well as some analysis, so I won't spend too much time. But we did, question one, we asked in the decision to locate your business to Auburn, how important was location, how important was the tax rate, and how important was permitting requirements? Location was, was very important to these business responses. About 75%. For the tax rate, about 50% said that that was very important. And permitting, about 40%. I think that is some noteworthy input. On question two, we asked, when, when they contacted the staff here in the office, how would, how would they rate their experience with the staff? About 50% said that is very positive. The other 25% said somewhat positive, so we're at about 75% positive experiences from these respondents. And neutral's 20, and somewhat negative is 3%. So, it sounds like good experiences from our, our businesses. On which offices have they interacted with? It was a varied, as you can see, oh, it's asking me to make changes on the computer. I'm sorry about that. As you can see, they've interacted, oh, thank you very much. Responses to the survey have been interacting with just about all of our departments. And we asked them how they would rate their timeliness to respond, their thoroughness in their responses, and their demeanor. We can see on timeliness, it's about almost 90%, if we combine very good and good, and 1% is poor. We have 10% fair. Thoroughness, again, almost 90%, very good and good. And demeanor, about the same, 85%, very good and good, with some fair and some poor. We asked which boards and commissions they've interacted with, and we see a pretty even split across our boards and commissions here in town. And again, how do we rate, rate their timeliness, thoroughness, and demeanor in interacting with our businesses? And we see very good and good, again, rating, you know, between 80 and 90% on, on those questions. We have fair gaining some traction there, 10 to 15%. And only on demeanor, we, do we have a poor response, those 2%. We wanted to know if people were using our website for interacting with the town. 50% of the respondents said yes, and 50% said no. For those who said yes, we wanted to know what they thought about the content and the user-friendliness. Overall, they were rated very good or good. And we asked how they would rate the time that it got, took to get permits issued and responsiveness to permit questions. Again, very good and good. Rated 70 to 80% the responses, and then we had fair creeping up here with 15 to 20%, and then some poor and some very poor. How would they rate inspection requests and permitting board decision issuances? Those looked very similar to the last. Lots of good, and with about 25% between fair and very poor on inspection requests, and same with the decisions for permitting issuances. We asked how the process or permitting process fit into their construction schedule. 30% said very well, 30% said somewhat well, and 25 were neutral. We did have almost 20% say somewhat poorly and poorly on fitting it into their construction schedule. How long did it take to move through the permitting process? You can see a range of days here, with most of the permits being issued from, I guess, 1 to 90 days. I did want to just mention, too, on, at least in the department that we work in, Inspectional Services, the building permits take about 30 days. Special permit has up to 180 days, a variance of 185 subdivisions, up to 130 days, and site plan approval, 130. So, we, you know, by the rules and regs, have a wide, kind of like a wide spans of time to issue those permits, and, and we do turn them over pretty quickly. So, near the end, we asked some more subjective questions. How would you recommend locating in Auburn to a fellow business? And 82% of respondents said yes, and they provided us some reasons. Business friendliness, location to highways was, was huge, well-maintained roads was often noted, people felt it's easy to do business, that there are nice people who work here in town, that it's a safe town, really responsive fire and police force out, again, was noted often, and access to a good workforce and a customer base. Reasons not to recommend Auburn are high taxes for business, not business-friendly, small-town politics, rude inspectors, and signage restrictions. I'll mention that rude inspectors and signage restrictions, there was one comment for the 73 responses, but I put all the comments on there. The other ones had a little more frequency on, on those answers. Was Auburn recommended to these responders? 17% said yes, 83% said no. So, reasons that it was recommended were low crime rate, responsive law enforcement, so those come up again, good location to hi, to the highways, nice schools, town staff, and available real estate. Question 13 is, has your business considered moving out of Auburn? 18% said yes, and 82 said no. The reasons for yes were real estate availability, the ability to grow, and public schools do not support local businesses. I saw that twice in the responses. And the economy, retirement, downsizing, so people closing their businesses as they step out of the workforce, split tax rate and higher taxes, and the town departments. Reasons for not leaving is proximity to the, to the highway, and the opportunity to do home businesses. We wanted to know if people were considering expanding, and if so, where? 40% said yes, they are considering expanding, 61 said no. 36% of those yeses are at their current location, 32 are elsewhere here in town, so people want to expand within town, or, you know, look at moving to new locations in town. Those 30% others, it looks like they are trying to, to move into new markets. So, we have Connecticut, Boston, and then other areas in central Mass. And we were curious if these businesses had joined the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. 40% of respondents who answered this question, so those about 21 responders answered this question, said yes, and 60 said no. And finally, we were wondering if, if these respondents would be willing to speak with a member of the Economic Development Committee to further talk about their business and their relationship with the town, and how that's been, things related to the, to the survey. We had 22 respondents share their phone numbers for the members of the committee to give them calls and to talk about their surveys. And at the moment, those members are following up with the calls. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Thank you. You may have said it in the, in the beginning. When was this survey done?
It was in August of this year.
The, you know, over the entire month?
Yes. What, what I did was mailed the survey out once the committee had finalized the questions. We mailed it out to the list and then gave them two weeks to respond. And we waited about a month, actually, before we processed the, the results.
And I'm, I know it's frustrating when you do this work and you, you work on a committee that, you know, like Dan does, he chairs this committee. You know, it's, it's got to be frustrating to send out 546 surveys and only have 73 respond. Were they mailed? Was it done online?
We mailed it, and it was enclosed with a return envelope that was stamped and...
Any sense why people didn't respond?
Through the chair, you know, it could be that they're busy. It was during the summer. I mean, we can't really gauge why. I know there was a request due on Survey Monkey, but I also know that Survey Monkey can be hacked, so.
No, it's just, it's a, it's an ex, you know, it's a well-thought-out survey and, you know?
Thank you.
Broken down well. It's just got to be frustrating that you, you know, you get 73 of 546.
Yeah, it was a little discouraging.
Okay. Do members have anything? Well, thank you for waiting. Good work.
Thank you for your attention after such a long meeting. Appreciate it. And myself and the committee just want to make you aware that we had performed the survey and what the sort of pulse was that we got back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simone, hold on, Eric, please.
It is good, it is good information despite the low responses, and I mean, certainly, this is the first time, right, that you sent? So, I mean, something to build on, at least, moving forward, but appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. So, let me just check the agenda here before we go into executive session. Classification, economic comment. Gift acceptance proclamation, town manager items, tabled items, supported select items. Is there any additional public comment? Mr. Simone?
Just want to, with, with tomorrow being Veterans Day, just want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day. Thank my fellow brothers and sisters who served for their service, and happy... and happy, I believe it's 239th birthday of the Marine Corps today, so enjoy your Veterans Day.
Mr. Simonean, it, and the entire motion needs to be read, is there a motion to go into executive session?
To make a motion, we enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, which is consideration of workers' compensation settlement.
Is there a second? This is a roll call vote, Mr. Capenta?
Can I just ask a procedural question? I don't know if anybody's here, I know at the end, we usually have a second public comment. I don't know how lengthy we're going to be in, I don't know if it would be appropriate to have them speak now and have it...
I just asked if there was any additional public comment.
Okay. Well, then I'll say aye, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simonean?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are adjourned to executive session.